Put it out.
All right, I think it's five, so we'll open the meeting. So it looks like we've got. This would be the accounts payable manifest in the amount, oh, six hundred four thousand dollars, eight hundred twenty seven dollars and seventy one cents.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There was a school uh district payment for five hundred.
Yeah, exactly, you're on that one.
No, actually.
Oh.
This, this just reminds us to give it to Cal when we sign.
Can you go up and read this before we get to reading? What, what did you just say, Ken, about this one? There's a what in here?
There's a school district payment. If you look at the next page, I think that was the school district for five hundred, I think it's five forty nine.
Yes.
Just so you know, we don't spend that much money every year.
Yes, yes, thank you. Good to know. That goes back to.
Yeah. Back to Cal. All right, I'll take the first payroll manifest, which is from July twenty seventh, in the amount of forty two thousand, one hundred forty dollars and sixty cents. So.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's busy people. Can you have bigger lines for us to sign? When I get a new stamp? Okay.
Yeah, there is a.
Got it. Well, that's great to realize it's a stamp, not a printout.
Yeah. All right, and then a second manifest. Cal, do you, yeah?
I don't need the rest of them.
Okay.
And this is just because we didn't have meetings for like three weeks, correct?
Yeah.
Second manifest is from August the tenth, in the amount of fifty three thousand, eight hundred seventy four dollars and thirty five cents.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Cal, you sometimes have had, or um, mine has had people come in and sign, so we don't have to do it now? That does not happen this time?
Uh, it didn't happen this time. Also, there's two documents accidentally held together. There's a loose sticky.
Ah, I got it, yeah. So we need to take those separately?
Uh, not the one you're holding, Scott, what my pen has.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's the manifest. Let me get that.
Are we just signing this, or does it need to go through a, oh, yeah, welfare?
Which one is it? Welfare, you do need to go. Cause that's a very good manifest.
Yeah.
All right, here, actually, take that back.
That's the welfare address.
You have that.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so this is a welfare manifest in the amount of one thousand five hundred forty nine dollars and twenty five cents.
So.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That should be the citizens' bank letter?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's out there. Okay, so this is the.
The disbursement for the Sandberg Trust and Forest.
Yeah, okay.
Every year.
Yeah. All right, so that is a distribution of funds from Sandberg Trust in the amount of twelve thousand, forty five dollars and sixty six cents.
So.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Where does this money go? It goes to the capital reserve fund. The Sandberg Trust Capital Reserve Fund.
And it's more an article twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
Yeah, oh, that's right, too. Yes.
Do you have to say what warrant article it's?
No, we have to do a warrant article.
We have to do a warrant article every year for this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the first year that we did that.
Oh, these are reappointments.
That's right. So, all right, so next is the twenty twenty five Forest Fire Warden appointments. Ken, I'm assuming everybody on the fire department there is a warden?
Is listed.
Is listed, correct. That's correct. And do we need to sign anything, or is it?
Yeah.
And do we need a motion?
There's a place, otherwise they lose the sticky.
Pages that have my signature, your signatures, and.
Okay. Do we need a motion, or just signatures?
Just signatures.
Is it Forest Fire Warden's?
It is.
Yes, that is correct.
That's basically everybody, isn't it?
No, actually. A little less than half the department, maybe a third of the department, maybe a quarter. Department's about twenty five, maybe.
Do we have a description of what a fire warden's control is?
So there, um, Wildland Fires, um, is kind of the, um, burn permits. Um, I guess the state can technically use them if they have a, a bigger incident.
Or they can be called in?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And do they, um, do we still have anybody, do we have anybody over in the tower, near the towers?
Well, there are some, but, yeah.
There are a couple, there's, there's a few towers that are still open, not shot many for these.
Yeah, there's state.
Oh, yeah, not like old town or anything?
They volunteer, also staff by volunteers.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's all run, I think, through the state.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Divisions of Forests.
Forests, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So deed to sell map one oh one, lot twenty one, to David and Denise. Here.
They are not. I told them that we would.
Okay.
The deed was ready, and you guys would sign it, and they'll come in this week and.
Okay. Yep.
Sign it, and give us a check.
We don't need a motion.
No. You guys agreed to.
We.
Yeah, we already agreed to that.
Too many to.
She's the deed that is from there.
What's the last name, God, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Dana. I guess that's just two for the same. So it looks like the signatures in the wire, I guess.
Who's our, can we have our, Robert?
I'm bad.
Who's our Robert?
And Sam.
Sam.
And Jose. And Rachel is here.
Oh, okay, oh, Rachel is, oh, good.
Oh, that was the other one.
All right, so next is warrant for land use change tax map two forty, lot number six. Ken, this is the, um. Eighteen Nottingham.
Um, I didn't get a chance to read, is that? Bandy? It's a.
Bandy?
What is that, the land use change tax?
Fucking did you do that? Yeah.
Um, I think it would be for Old Tilton Road. Or.
It's two. Two forty.
Um.
Probably all five, isn't it?
Um.
Two forty and one oh five.
All right, I call what they're.
Abbott Road.
Oh, yeah.
I think those are the two that I did.
Abbott?
Abbott Road.
Oh.
I can't think of their names at the moment.
We'll need to.
Okay.
They bought the house close to the road, they built a new house out back.
Oh, um, the Raincores old house, on the corner?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Oh, 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 okay.
Yes, fifty three Abbott Road.
Two sample, okay, so that's.
Sample.
Just make sure that that matches.
Yeah, so this is the deed that was, oh, wait.
Yeah, that's.
This is. See that, this. This, this, this is a part of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a part of that. Oh, I'm gonna cut it there. This is the deed for, um. This is the deed for the, the Dano's deed. This goes with the Dano package.
Okay. All right. Then I don't see any paperwork in here. For land exchange for either of them.
What, the?
Right in front of you, and.
Oh, okay, that's right, just, all right, so it's a little out of order.
Yeah, those two deeds go, I think those go with the Dano.
All right, so let me put this back. Okay, now it makes me.
So is Dano the one on Old Tilton Road? No, Dano, Dano's the one that bought the property up on, uh, um, Old Gilbert.
Abbott Road.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so Abbott is the. First one, correct?
Yes. Two forty, lot six is Abbott Road. Where the other stand for?
Okay, yeah, okay, so, um, and do, uh, would you sign any of this one?
Yeah.
And that was for, did they sell a piece of that property?
Don't know, but.
Who?
Samples, that land change, do they?
Sample? No, they didn't sell, they just encroached on some current used land, like, like their new house.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so there's the guy, and it looks like they signed it in two places, right?
Yeah.
Do we know what they're doing with the old house, or don't we, aren't we privy to that?
I'm just gonna say we're not privy to it.
That's fine. All right, we got two signatures. I should look at the name, cause I never remember their name, I know their dog.
The next one is Swanson.
Yeah, yeah, that one, I just haven't been able to, to look in, in that, so, I think we'll do that.
Thank you. Yes. It's, that's right, okay.
All right.
Never met the humans.
All right, so the next one is, uh, land use, warrant for land use change tax map one oh five, lot twenty. All right, so references to previous minutes. And Cal, I think I saw someone.
Um, yes, but my important one is here for her five ten appointment.
Oh, I know.
I'm happy to wait for you to finish the administrative stuff.
No, that's, that's okay, yeah. Come right up, please. You came in quietly, I didn't even see you come in. Yes. Yes, of course. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Here's one here, if anyone else wants to come in. All right. So I'd just like to state upfront that, um, I am here as resident, not in my capacity as member of the hiring board. Um. I know that there's been a lot of conversation from the start of the new electoral cycle about a code of ethics. Um, I know that, um, some boards and commissions are waiting for work on the select board on what's happening with that. Um, so I'm not sure where it's at in your process, but I wanted to lend some information, and really just as a resident. Um, who's laying roots here in Canterbury for a long time. Um, my concerns and my hopes for what comes of this decision that you guys are working on. Um. So Canterbury relies on boards and commissions for the essential functions of our town. A code of ethics or code of conduct for such boards and commissions aims to ensure transparent, accountable, and impartial governance. And such a code serves to enhance public trust by promoting that decisions being made with the best interest of residents, without conflict of interest or personal gain. The benefits also include increased civic engagement, improved decision-making processes, and a higher standard of integrity with, uh, within town operations. Conversely, the absence of an ethical code risks eroding public confidence, fostering abuses of power, and undermining the effectiveness of work pursued for common good. Implementing a code of ethics will formally preserve the town's democratic values and promote a culture of respect and ethical responsibility. Even if not enforceable, which that is, there's an argument to be made that it can be. Uh, a code of ethics serves as a vital moral compass, guiding the behavior and decisions of public officials, and it may be held as a standard for how we want our town to function. So in my brief time in town, and it is brief, uh, I have heard countless stories of self-interested decision-making and unethical behavior within town government. Both historical and among those presently serving our town today. I have witnessed myself violations of written law, inappropriate, irresponsible, disrespectful, and ethically questionable decisions, words, and actions. I have witnessed shockingly inappropriate behavior between town officials, um, both, I'm sorry, both explicit and implicit of, uh, toward residents by town officials. And behavior between town officials between each other that is unbecoming of the offices that they hold. I have also witnessed fairness, congeniality, kindness, respect, and ethically sound choices made in the interest of the common good. I hope that we can all agree that that is the Canterbury way. And my request, and what I'm imploring here, is that the select board establish this as the standard. Um, so we've also seen a recent uptick, I don't know if you pay attention to local news, a recent uptick in media stories around ethical violations, um, in towns across New Hampshire. Most recently Concord and Portsmouth, um, we know that those can come at high legal costs to taxpayers, which I think is something we'd all like to avoid. So, in this little informational booklet here, so it's a fairly common standard to have. Every city in New Hampshire, um, every, everything that qualifies as a city, not every town, has either a code of conduct or ethics, or both. The New Hampshire State Legislature has a code of ethics, the New Hampshire General Court has a code of, of ethics, and I highlight those because, um. You know, some of our boards serve as more of a legislative capacity, similar to what people do, and then some boards serve more as quasi judicial. So the fact that the, those at the top doing these functions in our state have codes of ethics, um, I think that we should be following suit. Um, and then there's a non-exhaustive list, I have something like a hundred and thirty four towns. Um, and I have been trying to go through, and you gotta Google each one to see if they're code of ethics. So this is a non-exhaustive list that I've gotten through so far of towns that do have them, if you want to look them up, um, for examples. And on page two, you have the legal support. Um. The legal support for codes of ethics and why we need them to protect right to know, which is transparency, um, avoid abusive office and practices. So I also included here sort of a template, um, based on all of the ones that I was able to look at of what these things include, their scope, their purpose. Um, highlighting Canterbury's core values and principles that are informing why we want one of these. Um, and then it goes into, um, either code of conduct, or sorry, code of ethics, ethical, different ethical standards, which include conflicts of interest. Uh, confidentiality, impartiality, and public trust. Um, and then the code of contact, conduct focuses more on behavioral expectations of professionalism, courtesy, respect, compliance with the law, and those sorts of things. Um, it can get into the, like, minutia of dress code and stuff like that, I don't think that that's necessary for our town necessarily, but, um, but those, some towns actually have that. Uh, I also included, I'm sorry, last thing here on, um, page four, additional considerations, so. I think that it would be really helpful to get public involvement, um, maybe in the form of a survey, to see what is important to people in terms of how their officials behave in their official capacity. Um, how they relate to the public, how they interact with each other. Um, how the public wants to see documentation and where they'd like it accessible. Um, I think that, you know, Canterbury's been doing things a certain way for a very long time, and times are changing, and the town is anticipated to grow, and, um, I think that. It's time that we just start at least taking a look at what residents want and updating, and maybe the residents say, this is what we want, we're, we're good with. Um, you know, how accessible things are, how minutes are done, or, um, you know, how officials are interacting with the public, and that's great, but I think that the question should be asked. Um, and then also training and education, I, I think that there's a lot of free training offered with the, um, New Hampshire Municipal Association, and I'm shocked at how few people take it. Um, to that end, the last thing here is I, um, added New Hampshire Municipal Association's most recent conflict of interest deck slide. Um, that's titled, It All Begins With Ethics. Uh, so this can go into a bit more detail for your own research as you're, you're forming, hopefully forming this document for the town. Um, as to, to more detail, as to what they recommend is included. Um, and I think that. I personally have been quite surprised and shocked with the resistance, the hesitancy towards a code of ethics, um, when I brought it up. Particularly with officials and the contrast that I have, um, experienced when I bring it up to residents, who generally think this is a very good thing to have. Um, but again, don't, don't take my word for it, survey, survey the residents. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but really this is just me coming to provide you some more context, provide some more information. Um. And implore you to, to implement something like this. I think it's really important.
I say thanks for all this information, um, since I'm the person who apparently is charged with crafting.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Crafting a code of conduct, so here's my draft. That, um, when I have a minute, I work on, and quite frankly, every time we have a meeting, something comes up that changes it, and that is a good addition. Um, we had a recent meeting where we went through all the job descriptions with the police department. There were a number of items on there that, uh, were, were good ideas to include in this. Um, the municipal records committee that was just formed when we met recently and talked about, um, how to keep minutes and procedures and process, which I know you're also very involved with and concerned with. Um, it's also something that should be in here. At, at first look, my problem has been to make it a document that's user-friendly enough that somebody will actually read it. Because it doesn't help if you have a big, long official, wonderful thing that outlines everything, and then everybody says, too big, I don't care, I'm not going to read it. So, my first goal, um, is to have anybody who, well, I think our goal is to have anybody who wants to aspire to town position. To have this document to be able to know ahead of time what we expect, and also, quite frankly, what the rules are. Because there is a lot of legalities in both, in all our boards and committees that people need to be aware of before they just say, yeah, I wanna be a, a whatever. Um. So I think that's part of it. Um, I'll be very interested, I've been hiking through some of the other towns' code of conducts too, there are a lot of them, they're all very different. And I really appreciate having all of this to look through, and the, you have to municipal associations, these slides outline everything really well. But I think there's a lot that we can do to make it. To craft it, so it's a usable document for our town. Um, and I'd be interested to hear who has given you negative feedback on having a code of conduct or ethics, and you know, the ops need to go into it here. Because at this level, uh, and any of the boards I've talked to, they're all. They're all interested in having it spelled out so that we all know, so that we're all on the same page, and that we can all work for the town. Um, and it's good to have the process and the procedure, so if you have a question, okay, well, here it is. And, and me personally, in crafting this, I think it's important for people to know that upfront. So that, you know, there should be a copy of whatever we come up with available in March or in April, whenever, you know, it comes time for people to sign up to run for select board. So look at this and say, this is what we expect. And this is what you should aspire to. I agree, it's very important. And, um.
And I added at the end of that, uh, Bosclins, um, so.
Yes, I saw that.
They actually require that appointed and elected officials sign. So this is an example of one where they, you are to sign, um, this document, this code of conduct, um, on the last page there. Um, in your conflict of interest statement, that, that anybody who's, uh, uh, an employee, appointed, or elected, needs to sign and agree to this, to take their position. Um, so I put that on there as an example.
We discussed that, I don't know how that'll play out, because that's tricky. Um, especially if you have boards already in position, and you present them with this, and someone says, no, I'm not gonna sign. How do you deal with that then? Um, it'll, it would come up, I'm sure, so, um, I think it's a good thing to consider, and I, I can't say whether or not that'll happen, but. At least people should be required to, I believe personally, uh, read and, you know, acknowledge that they've waited. I can't say signing it, but that's at the end of the process. Um, I think crafting the document first. And actually, when you gave us a code of conduct, was it from Bosclin? What time you have, you sent us one?
Yeah, it was from.
It's Belmont.
Yeah.
Belmont.
Yeah.
That was one, I think I sent to everybody, yeah.
It's almost fine. Correct. Yeah.
And. I would, I would just say, you know, Bosclin's our neighbor.
Yeah.
Their, their select board is incredibly friendly, and you could, this was approved in twenty fifteen, so you can ask how did they implement that with people who are already serving?
Yeah.
Um, how did they do that? And this is something that they review periodically, so this was most recently reviewed, June fifth, um, twenty twenty four, so in terms of a standard of procedure and process, I think that. You know, we will, we will have review processes for things like an annual CIP review, there should just be across the board an annual review of specific documents for boards and commissions, and this one should be included to make sure that it's, um, a living document, as you said.
That's a good way to term it, a living document.
Yeah.
As, as opposed to living town members. And the living and changing town. I think you're right, everything is changing now, and I believe transparency has come to the top of the heap as far as an important concern. And certainly, um, as Cal can attest, when we get the new website up and running, uh, and how that works, and how people can find information about how. Boards are working or not working, or what information they're sharing. Um, I think we'll hear a lot from them, but, um. Uh, a, uh. Asking the town's opinion about how this should be is always a good idea. Survey is the word I was looking for. Survey is the word I was looking for.
Survey is a great. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is great, and thanks for including those slides, I've got them earmarked somewhere, but it's always better to have a paper copy to put in my stack with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Megan. Hey, Megan, can you, um, email us as well?
Sure.
Please. And we're just, um, to the town.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, man?
Hi, Brian.
Hey, how are you guys?
I'm good. A lot of wires up on holes.
I'm sorry, I was moving the chair, getting period.
A lot of wires up on holes out there.
We're working at it. Um.
Director Brian Christian, Director Government Regulatory Affairs, Comcast, and I've heard of you folks a few times over the past few years. Can't ask me to come on in probably on behalf of talk about our progress building out to residents in the community. I shared a list with Ken, and sometime in April, I think, regarding us building out to about 200 addresses on Comcast business. There are probably about another dozen to 20 homes that we've applied to the state broadband matching grant initiative to build out with some funds from the state government.
Is that for BEAT?
No, that's broadband matching grant initiative.
Oh, something else, alright.
Yep, BEAT has not been, um, there's no programs yet for BEAT. Let's go back to BEAT in a minute.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't mean to interrupt. I wanted to make sure I knew what you were talking about.
Broadband matching grant initiative was funded by ARPA-LAN, and the state has to, the towns, I guess for that matter, have to commit to their ARPAP funding by the end of this year. We expect the contract between Comcast and DEA Business and Economic Affairs to go before Governor and Council at one of their September meetings. So that will hopefully get us our funding for the other dozen to 20 homes. So this is all said and done, I think we're gonna build to about 220 homes. The list I shared with Ken earlier, as I said, Comcast is building on there on, on our, on our investment, I guess it's life by words. There were some dates shared. Some of those dates looked about 60 to 90 days, life by words for supply issues. The ones at the beginning are 60 to 90 days. We think the ones at the end are probably gonna be close to hit the dates we, we shared. But I think we're gonna get most of, most of those 200 or so hooked up here by the end of the year. The other dozen, 20, gotta be a little bit. You understand contracts with the state, nothing else has to follow. That's why we are happy to share the list and, on what we can do on our own, not pay for state, state slash federal dollars. BEAT, BEAT is kind of the next iteration of broadband money. The state's going through basically a challenge process right now. It was, I think the challenge process ends August 12th, if I'm remembering correctly. And then once, once that is done, and I'm not even sure if there's rebuttal to the challenge process, there's probably gonna be a rebuttal. I don't think you're gonna see BEAT funding, the state has several hundred million dollars. I don't think you're gonna see BEAT funding low probably till sometime next year. That's kind of the speculation part of my testimony. But the challenge process doesn't end until August 12th. There's probably gonna be a rebuttal. They have, they have to get the ARPAP money committed before the end of this year. So I think they're really focused on that. As I've said many times in front of the board, there's enough money to get everybody served in the state. It's just, you gotta go through the process. One of the other hiccups with getting some of the money from the state that's flowed through from the federal government is every address needs to have what's called a BSL, a broadband serviceable location. So if it doesn't have a broadband serviceable location, I don't, what's the address here, I'm sorry? Like at this building, uh, this is 10. 10. If-
10 Center Road.
If 7 Center Road doesn't have a broadband serviceable location assigned to it, it is not eligible for federal funding, or state funding. So that's been a, that's been a process that-
And what determines that? Have you worked, obviously, in the middle?
NTIAA and FCC have a map, and they, here, are you having the weeds? Broadband serviceable locations are determined by lat-long. And if the lat-long turns out into that field and it doesn't have an address, it's not 10 and a half, it's not, it's not eligible.
Oh my gosh, okay.
Yeah.
That's a little, a little nitty.
It is a process. And that's why you're probably gonna see, you're, you're gonna ask questions on addresses. So if we have, did you say this is 7?
Seven.
7, and that's 9 Center, let's call that 11 Center Road, and that field is 9 Center Road? You're passing by 9 Center Road. You can get it, even though it doesn't have a broadband serviceable location. But it's not eligible for reimbursement.
Oh, okay, got it.
Understood, so, okay. If you don't see addresses, but you see addresses on this end of the road, this end of the road, and it doesn't have a BSL, chances are you're gonna get it, but-
They'll get coverage but not reimbursed?
The provider wouldn't get reimbursed.
Got it.
Yeah. So it's, you guys have been hearing me for years about this. Ken's like, the board wants you to come in. I'm like, okay. That was the extent of our exchange. So that's kind of where we're at in the process. It's, it's a slow-moving process. I know we released some addresses for hookups today on Sanborn Road? Does that make sense? Sanborn Road? And they're gonna start rolling. So when we release addresses, these are those approximately 200 I've talked about earlier. It's in our own best interest to hook up customers. So we are sending door-to-door salesmen in, in, we're, we're in conformity with local peddlers' ordinances and stuff. They come on, they come checking with the used department. We send mailings, we'll, you can do phone calls. We have a phone number for that address. So it's definitely in our best interest to hook the customers up. You made a, a kind of comment about there's lots of wires up down, so there are definitely wires up, but they may not be connected, right? So there's, um, there's steps to go along the way, so, um, don't call us, we'll call you.
And when you get-
You run into a couple situations where somebody says, ah, the wire's in front of my house, and they've called for an install, and somebody's scheduled an install and hasn't worked, because it's not connected back into the system yet.
Well, that's not helpful. So of the two, if, when you build out to these 220 homes, what percentage of the town then will be covered?
Yeah, Ken and I have discussed this. I think we're gonna get everybody. We, it's one of those things, we don't know what we don't know. I think there may be ones and twos left.
But, but after the 220, you said there was like 12 or a bunch of houses. Is that like the only, the last 12 in town?
We think we're pretty darn close after that. I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say you're not gonna come, you're not gonna ask me a year, what about, you know, 1 Ellen Street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we, you know, Ken and I have worked a lot exchanging spreadsheets, and we filtered in, and I think we're getting pretty much everybody.
Wow.
Yeah.
So we've had two new houses coming into town. Are those gonna be picked up under this, or are they gonna be-
I, I, I don't know what, what addresses.
Depends on where they are.
Yeah.
Well, I'm taking down Old Tilt Road, there's one going in there.
Yeah, they already have, if there's already coverage on Old Tilt Road, then they will have it as soon as their houses set up. If they don't have coverage today, if the neighbors on either side don't have coverage today, then it'll be until the rest of the town is done.
I think Old, Old Tilt Road is the road that just popped in my head that's unserved, so. I could be wrong, but yes.
One of your customers.
Yeah, you have, yeah, no, Old Tilt Road is served.
Yeah, that's why you say it's on the list of unserved, because it pop for me.
Well, we're down to Ginger's, didn't it, I think?
Yeah, I have, you know, there's Ames, Asbury, Ayers, Asby, Ayers, Basscross, and Moro. Frye, Bush, Paul, and Black, Foster, at the Moro, and, and the Spill. Long run.
It's been a long time coming.
It is a long time.
Right, a couple of questions that have come up, one of which, I see a couple of planning board members here. Are you, is what we're seeing being run now all fiber optic, or is it a combination of fiber optic?
It's a combination. So our technology is kind of, our, our products and services are kind of technology agnostic. So the speeds we're delivering in Boston on our HFC network or San Francisco, the same speeds we're gonna be delivering here in Canterbury. The way the technology's going is, it's a lot of software driven. It's not, it's not that wire. It's, you know, you hear fiber about future-proof, but fiber's not future-proof. Fiber needs to get replaced in about 10 years. If you think, you can have old buildings in town, and you think of glass in an old building, it's pretty fragile. And we're finding that in the industry is that fiber needs to be replaced. It's not, it's not, it's not future-proof. It's a buzzword, it's a marketing word, but it needs to be maintained just like every other piece of infrastructure.
So the residents that are stressing concern over fiber versus copper, it's really a non-issue.
In our, yeah, in our experience it is.
For the service you can provide, it is in town.
Yeah, you know, we, and I have a whole fact about, we're going through iterations of technology, we're about to launch DOCSIS 4.0, which is basically bonded on stream channels, and it's been, it's been, it's been field-tested and it's starting to be field-deployed at speeds up to 6 gigabits symmetrical. So the future is coming, and it's not, it's not based on the wire.
Okay, understood. And the other question, second question, I guess I'll say, is what speed can the town expect?
Yeah, so right now, I need to remember speed slides, they're just always changing. But right now, you know, we offer an extra package at 20 megabits, like 3 megabits, possible. We are in the process of doing kind of a mid-upgrade on our way to that DOCSIS 4.0 I discussed. And we have packages that are 2 gigabits right now.
20 up, but what's your down speed?
Down, I wanna say that 2 gigabits might be 3 to 4 to 500 megabits.
I guess.
I don't have a slider, I never just slide anywhere, so, no pun intended. But yeah, this, once we get to DOCSIS 4.0, it should be sometime next year. We're gonna start really marketing our symmetrical speeds. And, and, and that's just not for me built, that's for, that's for people on Center Road.
Yeah, and that'll be another one, same down, same up is down.
Yeah, every consumer is gonna have the same suite of services, depending if they're being built now, if they were built five years ago.
Yeah. And for those asking, have any salespeople started going around?
I don't know if anybody's gone to Sanborn yet. I literally got that information at 10:30 this morning. That was from construction, I have connected the sales.
That's a busy road, isn't it?
But we would obviously comply with, you know, local peddler's ordinance.
Understood, yeah.
I'm not sure.
The peddlers off, peddling high-speed internet, the peddler's ordinance.
I get, I get weird when even people come knock on my door, you know, I live in a rural community. Somebody starts walking in the driveway, you're like, what's going on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, that's why they check in.
Yeah.
So I'm one of those guys that sees the wires hanging down and stuff like that. Do we talk to you, or do we talk to Consolidated or who's responsible?
Opinion aside, this is the equation. Nine times out of 10, it's on us, and it's probably to Consolidated. But take picture, Ken will send it to us, we'll, we'll go look at it that day and fix it.
We've got a wire that's been hanging in front of the cemetery for three or four years. It looks like the wire is broke, it held up with a loop that's hanging down there.
What's up, this cemetery?
Right, right up there.
Like, yeah.
You probably can almost see it from here.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll send somebody by tomorrow.
Would you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll look at it.
That was easy.
I'll look at myself when I have.
Very, that was easy.
It's on the bottom, so I'm guessing it's probably not yours.
If it's, yeah, and there's generally a hierarchy on telephone poles. Telephones generally, the bottom we're next, and then electric. There's other telcos that kind of go below us and above telephone, but it's, it's generally in the middle generally.
Is there a way that people can, can, like as you say, you kind of little weirded out when people come walking up your driveway and knock on it to sell you, even if it's something you really want? Is there a way for people, is there an easy way for people in town to contact Ping and say, Ping, is it, is it our turn yet?
Yeah, um, yeah, you know, obviously, I wanna trust the system and say, one of the other Comcast, but I also know there, there was definitely an example of somebody insisting there was a wire in front of their house, and he said, yes, the person on the other end of the phone, okay, I'll take your word for it, got it installed, scheduled. The guy actually hooked a wire to the house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it just wasn't connected further down the line. So I wanna say trust the system. You know, what I can do is I can, I can do my best efforts to let Ken know when the addresses are released and-
And then can we put that out on like the town?
Newsletter or email?
Or the town newsletter website?
Town email, or on the website.
And just say, these addresses next, there's going, going to be somebody coming?
Yeah, as I said, it's definitely in our best, best interest to, to connect people. Otherwise, it's lack thy words, stranded capital, right? You don't wanna, you don't wanna build wires if somebody doesn't-
Well, it's not like we have, it's not like people don't want it, so they're gonna want you to come and sell it to them. But so long as you can make that, that happen easily, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we'll, sure. Ken and I have been connected, but now that people are, now that these things start to be at the release, it's probably even as important to stay united as, as we're doing.
And how, just like, Cal, what's our schedule for the new website? Is there something that's doable, like a Comcast button thing? I know you and I talked about buttons for important, like, is Comcast at my house thing? You know, here's the list of addresses, sir.
Yeah, we could put that on the, we could put it in the new section on the current website, or we could make a little Comcast button or a broadening.
I mean, enough people have been asking about it then.
Do you have, do you have GIS capabilities?
Well, on the current website.
No, that's, we have Avatar, shows our kids maps. Oh, we don't have GIS.
Yeah, you obviously have the service map that I've shared with you, but that's now starting to get a little outdated.
I mean, I, I don't even say now, we just want to have, it's closer.
Ryan just sends me a list of, of addresses that have been released. We can just update our website when, when the list comes out and say, check our website for the list of addresses that have been released by Comcast, you know, if they expect someone to be approaching you.
Or call us.
In the near future, you know?
Would that help, Brian, speed things along if?
It would help for the consumers, because I, I, I've been down there a lot of years, I understand the desire. It would definitely help for the consumers. It's, you know, like if that door-to-door salesman's working in Peterborough that day, it might be easier for somebody to call him. So, yeah, I think it would definitely help for sure, it doesn't hurt.
So maybe if we include the phone number?
And just for a more ed- education aspect, so there's a process. So once it's constructed, it's tested and activated, and the addresses need to be activated in the building system. So I think Sanborn was actually done last week, but it was released. You've heard me use that term a few times today. It was released today, meaning it's released for Sanborn. So.
Now it's really good to go.
That's really good to go.
Really good, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Brian, for all your appearances.
I literally, I don't know, so we're hot talks.
This is the first time I've seen you, so it's nice to see you, but I'm sure we'll see you again.
Yes.
Alright, thanks, Brian.
Mr. Dash.
That's again.
Good to see you both.
Wait, right there.
Thanks. I love a good correction. I think, no, I think it's great.
I tried to just do a copy and paste.
Is, are these the measurements that you were taking today?
Did you receive a copy of the, um, an orderly option from?
Road Asian.
Yes, okay, I forgot to bring that with me.
No, no, you have that, thank you.
It's in there.
Ah, in the, no, okay, okay.
We will have it to, for to. Yeah, these are copies.
Um, so the very top thing is a letter that came in today, um, about this topic from?
Yeah, from Greg Heath and Carrie Clark.
Yes, those are names, and then underneath that, there should be one which is unsigned, which is the, um, stapled to the northern copy and then this, underneath that should be the signed one from a few weeks ago,
Yeah. Okay.
which is stapled to the southern.
Okay, all right, so I'll pass that down, um, and I'll, I'll pass that over so you have a chance to read that letter, which just came in today.
When did done, when did Carrie and Greg Heath?
We got that letter this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, that was email.
Do we have, did you say you emailed it to us? No, it was an email to us.
No, it's, it's the higher copies there.
Oh, oh, email to this. Okay. No, I was just trying to see if I missed an email, cause I couldn't. This is.
All right, so this is, you have the one that's, it's twelve ninety-six, stacks off. The, the northern.
Yes.
Stacks off.
Yes, northern ashes.
So this is southern, yeah.
So this is the one that we've got, this is the one we read, yeah.
This is one copy, one there.
There's just one copy, there's just one copy, okay.
There's just one copy, so, so that has a, that has a one copy.
All right.
Is that John's, uh, northern, uh?
Scott, do you wanna work that, have that part there?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's what I, I was waiting.
Just move us a lot of those faster.
Do, do we get to see the letter, can you, that?
Yes, that's what, so we're gonna pass it over, of course you do.
Oh, that's, oh, okay.
Are you done with the letter from Karen Clark or you quit?
One sec, can I just read it?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I will read it, it will, on your part. Did you read this, uh, Scott?
I have not, uh, I'm sorry, that letter, yes, I have, yeah.
Okay.
Miles round, there you go.
Thank you.
You wanna use that?
Okay, sounds good, yeah, yeah.
I can, I can attest the fact that this is a document from the, for the northern, oh, no, I saw this.
Right. Yeah, that's what you saw, but at least Ken can keep that.
Yeah.
That has the two air pop, you know, that's where it's referred to, it's right there, yeah.
Okay. That one, that one.
I think we'll just sort of take this point by point.
Yep.
I should have brought my glasses.
No worries, I've got a pair of them on the bar.
Well, I, he didn't bring his, I don't know.
He didn't, I was saying, would you, would you like mine, ride it out to my car?
One.
You want, you want these?
As you get a little older, you will not go anywhere without them, so.
I have two hands off my pocket.
Yeah.
I love that it's going to be recorded forever, that people are sharing glasses and stuff, I mean, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Oh, I think I'll add it to my shopping list.
Sparrows, yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, like that voting, the bucket of magnifying glasses, that's probably an excellent idea.
One two seventy-five.
It's good to know.
It's, it's, it's not a bad idea, for any of the meetings that happen.
You're done? Okay.
I'll take that back and I'll put that back in your folder.
Is that possibly be enough to us?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
We each have each one.
Uh, this is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is the northern, this is what's, that's what's here.
Right, the northern.
Northern path.
Yeah, the northern path, exactly. All right, so what I, I think we'll do is we'll just take it point by point. So, um, I, I'm just gonna read this aloud into the record. So to the Board of Selectmen, Canterbury, New Hampshire, we are requesting the board to waive the ditch lines, depth and width of the road, northerly end of Wyven Road, Canterbury, New Hampshire, for the following reasons. Point one, ditch lines will be created naturally due to the road being raised with gravel. And you know, Ken, you and the, uh, fire chief took a ride up there today, right?
Yes, Beth, myself and the fire chief went up there, um.
Okay.
We really need to look at the ditch lines, I don't want, in, in a couple of areas of the road, it's, it's, the terrain drops off naturally and then then on the other side, there's, it rises naturally, so, um, there's areas, I, I think, probably when you start talking about the ditch lines, you wanna talk about the width, because it's certainly narrow right now and if it was widened, I think that may take care of some of the runoff issues.
Okay.
Did you notice, uh, never with that torrential downpours, none of that washed out?
Yeah.
No.
Well, there's nothing to wash out there yet, though.
Yeah.
Well, if you, yeah, if you stop disturbing everything, then, but.
I think we're gonna be looking at the trees along the side, cause that's what's growing.
I thought I.
That is really what's probably is the trees, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
But there was a lot of, well, when do we get to discuss the trees? Is there a point in your concerning?
I think about the width, probably.
Yeah, so that, actually, let's, let's go on, we'll come back to, so.
Yeah, well, it'd be to the width.
Yeah, the width of the road will vary in width from sixteen to eighteen feet to maintain the existing natural aesthetics, i.e. trees, stone walls, et cetera, so, so there we are, trees.
It was very apparent when we were driving down there today, the, the rural character of that road and you would have to do a monstrous amount of cutting to get it to eighteen feet with a, with a four.
Two foot.
Two foot on each side. It didn't seem, to me, it didn't seem appropriate for that area.
Okay.
Also considering the other end of the road, the width, and even the beginning part of the northern end of the road, it seemed,
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and, and, um, Chief seemed to think that it was okay to get a vehicle down there, he was not.
Yeah, if, uh, he felt that if the road was even close to what the existing stretch of the approved section is,
Yeah.
then it would be not, not a problem for plant farmers per se.
Okay.
So he certainly are gonna have to cut some trees, but it doesn't, in his, in his opinion, it didn't have to be any wider than what you currently have on the improved section.
The gravel part.
Correct, to the driveway, right.
Yeah.
Especially considering, I didn't realize that, that how close the stone walls were to the edge and the, the really mature trees.
The only.
Yeah.
The only thing he talked about was a turnaround, um, at the end.
Yeah.
Yep.
So a fire truck could come in and turn around, um, it's rural, there's no fire hydrants, so they have to come in,
Yeah.
get water, have a tanker come in, bring water in, and then turn around to the back and get another tanker in, so there'd have to be some kind of turnaround at the end.
Yeah, I agree with that, I measured it anyways, forty feet, which is the road, it's like forty feet beyond the last driveway,
Yeah, and that's what, but.
and I'll, I'll make sure it's plenty wide enough, I mean, as you look at my road, I don't wanna do, I, I just want it to, I want it to look good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, just go, no. Yeah.
But I don't wanna take out every big tree and everything in it.
Right.
No, no.
And I don't think we want that either, I mean, that's, you know, as you said, there's character.
Talk about disturbing the aesthetics of the area, I know you wouldn't wanna blast it, it's a, it's a beautiful little road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, is, is power coming down from the north end then on this, or is it coming up on south?
Well, there's a power pole on the south end on our property.
So you don't, you don't get your power down.
Power pole is, so I don't see why people can't pull off that one, that, that's their issue, not mine.
Understood.
That way they will be, you know.
So, cause I'm not a builder or anything else, that is, that is to them where they come from.
Right.
Yeah.
And it would also keep with the aesthetics by not having, if there's a pole already there, they can attach to it and that would.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That way they don't do additional poles and disturb more.
Yeah. Right, right.
And it's already on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, point three, historically Wyven Road has not experienced washouts because of the natural slope of the road is minimal. I think we talked about that already. Um, point four, due to Wyven Road being deemed private, we would like to ask for a waiver for the width of the road and the thickness due to this status and not being a thorough road, as the southern land has put up a gate abutting by property. Putting up a gate technically makes it a dead-end road. Is that gate locked now?
I had no idea that's locked, huh?
It is not locked, but it's also not hinged, it looked like it was just a section of fencing with two poles on the way.
So that is.
But it also.
It looks like, it looks like they drove in too big, used a rebar, they gave a side of the road and then
Yeah. It's on the gate.
attached, attached the gate to those pieces.
On the rebar, yeah.
But if, if they own that road, they even specify in there, they do not want, it's the north and the south.
Yeah, yeah. You can drive around it, and I don't know what the, um, I can't remember if the chief weighed in on this or not, if there was a fire emergency and they needed to get through that gate? Could they just?
Plant farmer has a master key, yeah.
Okay.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, so, so that gate could, that gate could be dealt with in an emergency.
We would get through that gate.
Plant farmer needs to get through there, so they'll figure out a way to get.
Yeah. You can, you can kind of drive around it now, but, um, it's not, it's not locked per se, it's not lockable, it's just standing, so, um, if that makes a difference in the, in the thing, in the discussion.
All right, and the final point, I'll have you expand on this point. So we would also like the comment by the building inspector on our application to be removed or a letter stating that the select board does not agree with these comments, therefore striking it from our application approval. We would like such a letter to be attached to our application and a copy given to us in our attorney please.
So on the application, you know where everybody like to fire department ways and the police, the building inspector?
On the road waiver application, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, yes.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
There was a comment by the building inspector, basically that he wouldn't approve building on one of the lines,
Yeah.
but you, you didn't put it in the approval and, you know, you put in the upgrade, that that would be the only, um, what's the word?
I don't think I've seen this one.
And so the building inspector, the building inspector looked at the zoning map and
Yeah.
one of the lots crosses two zoning, two zones.
Oh, 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 that issue, yeah, yeah.
But then he realized after, it's cause Webb talked to him and, or you talked to him and he realized that, okay, yeah, you're right, going that way. If you're going the smaller way and trying to squeeze another three acre lot, no, but you're going to the bigger lot.
Okay.
One zone requires three acres, one zone requires five acres.
Yeah.
So he felt that if, if you go by the letter on the zoning amendment, or the zoning article, that he wouldn't be able to give a building permit on it, because there isn't enough property to get, because of the way where the zoning line lies.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, after discussion with myself and the surveyor, um, we talked about other towns and how they would handle this.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, uh, it's pretty much a moot point at this point.
Okay.
And I think that that, and, and the building inspector agreed that, well, that would be not, that would not come up as an issue.
Okay.
Oh, so the building inspector is willing to?
The building inspector would be, okay, would be able to change that.
Change his own comment. Oh, sure, well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that?
So I, I can, I can talk to the building inspector and have him attach a letter to that, just, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be, to have.
They just don't like everything part of the zoning, it's like a whole lot you do.
Oh, understood, yeah, you get that.
No, that makes sense, cause then, then everything agrees.
Yeah. Right.
Uh, so what do you do now?
I think you need to come up with a, some kind of agreement on the proposed, uh, improvement plan from the road agent.
Yeah.
May go down those points as addressed in this letter, so you can come up with some kind of document
Yeah.
that actually spells out what has to be done.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, this is, uh, the road agent's, uh, report.
Oh, can, um, when we get to it, culverts, when you get to the section on culverts, because when we drove today, it, some, we mentioned culverts, but then I don't, we never specifically looked at where he was recommending.
Yeah. That's what.
I know where it is, it's down in that dip, right, he said, either do a culvert or build it up so it has a natural runoff.
Okay.
Point four.
All right, well, when we get down there.
Okay.
So it was either or, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Cause that's not addressed in, in your, in these points, so I wanna make sure it's coming in.
Understood, yeah, I got you, yeah, no, that's okay, hold that far, that's all I'm, I'm saying.
Okay, sorry. Hold it. I'm putting a pin in it.
Right, so, all right, so length of upgrade is twelve hundred ninety-six feet plus or minus, starting from the south side of current driveway of ninety-three Wyven Road, ending forty feet plus or minus, south of the new driveway for lot sixteen dash one. So the length of the upgrade would still be the twelve ninety-six, correct?
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
Right, okay, so we're all in agreement on that?
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to the second item, a ditch line along the west side from the ledge crossing at eleven hundred ninety-three feet plus or minus will flow south to the end of the upgrade. And are we?
That, that's where the natural slope tapers like that.
And it, it.
So once you bring the gravel up, it's gonna, it's gonna taper it anyways away from it.
Yeah.
But if you start digging, then you're gonna have some washouts, for sure.
Um, I'm not gonna agree with that, I'm sorry. I mean, I've been all over your town roads for the last two years, and we were having problems if we don't have ditches
Yeah.
and it's running down the ditch and then it jumps up on the roadbed, and I know you're gonna try and get a crown to it and all that, and you're gonna try and bring up enough gravel, it's just, that's not what happens. Not putting culverts in, it's like, well, maybe they won't bring it.
No, they say put a culvert, I'll put a culvert in.
Oh, I thought you said.
No, this is a ditch line.
No, 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 the ditch line.
Ditch line, okay.
No, no, the culvert's fine, I don't care about that, I'll put the culvert in, that's not my issue.
All right, well, I think that's what you suggested.
No, 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 all right.
Okay, so are we okay without ditch line?
I don't know how to weigh in on that, except driving the road, it certainly fell off at a, down to, as you're going towards the southern end of Wyven Road that it fell off, on the, on the right side of the road, so if, if it's crowned and it, it, does that solve it? Does it solve it for the other side of the road? I can't speak to that.
Right, which is the.
The uphill, uphill by, towards where the, the cemetery is, up that way. And what happens if we say no, um, and they don't do a ditch line and it washes out?
It's a private road and you guys sign papers, and we make us sign waivers, so, we sign all the waivers,
Oh, you guys wonder.
which we're responsible for anything anyway, so.
You guys, your problem, pretty much.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay, well.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna be responsible for the upgrade.
Correct, the road agent visits any road with a road waiver twice a year, spring, fall, if it requires some kind of work that he notifies a resident and, and talks to them and says,
Yeah, you have to try the southern end in the spring.
you know, you sign the road waiver that says it has to be maintained, if he's more gravel here, or there's a culvert that's plugged or something, then it's up to them to, to take care of it.
Right.
And obviously to do that.
And then juicy mine, well taken care of.
Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, third item, a ditch line along the west side from the ledge crossing at eleven hundred ninety-three feet plus or minus will flow north to the end of the low area at six hundred seventy-seven feet plus or minus. Ditch lines from beginning to seven, seven, seven feet to flow south. So once again, same side of the road, except flowing in a different direction, right?
You got two ends, got two ends, kinda go to the middle, where I said, I'll put the culvert in right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So they both kinda, they slope like this, but then they also travel downwards to the, the lower area.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay.
And is that part of the, um, so are you agreeing that there's, that that statement that was just read should occur, or no, no ditch lines?
No ditch, uh.
Okay, all right.
If I, if it, obviously, like I said, if, if I think it needs to, then I will put one anyways, um, I'm not, yeah.
It'll naturally occur, I mean, right. And it will naturally, it will naturally occur when they, when they, um.
Because everything right now is pretty much every, all the way down, it's, it's high enough that it goes like this, the ground is higher, uh, so, etc., we can get down and glove. I'm gonna bring it up and I'm gonna put a culvert pipe under and.
So by that, by, by raising the roadbed, that kinda creates a natural ditch line, yeah, um, would be the, would be the hope, I would think.
That. Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense.
And the first rainstorm, you'll know, whether it worked or not.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying now is it hasn't even washed this out.
Right.
With all the rainstorms, so you're adding gravel to it, you're bringing it up higher, so the gravel is still running down wherever, and, and it's flowing off where it needs to flow.
It makes sense to me.
I, I, I'm just gonna stay out of this kind of discussion, cause I, I don't agree with putting things in that aren't up to some sort of snuff, that, that won't handle all, and I see too much of it in town. It's gonna be their road, I understand, are we gonna be sending buses down there? Are we gonna be sending fire trucks down there if we got an issue down there? And I just wanna make sure that whatever we put in, we'll, we'll handle that, cause we've already seen this not happen on Hancock. Right, had to go back.
Are you guys responsible for it?
Well, we are in the sense that we have to make you guys do it, because it's required, so we can get our police car down there and our fire trucks. That's what we're responsible for.
Oh, and with the agreement, that he's saying that they come twice a year, it, we are agreeing to making sure it happens.
He comes down, come down, if you don't like that, then you come there.
So if it's not, if it's not.
Yeah, the road agent will tell it.
Yeah.
And it'll be up to us to make sure it happens.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't think, though, you have us that goes down there, because there are only two.
Well, to that end road, you're gonna have one house, may, we almost, somebody else was interested in buying both lots and only putting one house.
Okay.
I'd love to do that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and it's gonna be, it's a dead end road, nobody's gonna travel it.
Right.
They would have to go to the end of the road if they were a bus driver.
Yeah. All right, uh next item, at six hundred seventy seven feet plus or minus, a culvert could be installed fifteen inch minimum with flow to the west or buildup of the road will push water to the wall on east side and onto lot sixteen. Possible water easement needed.
Now, that's where
You were talking.
the low spot where the water flows already, it goes down and it flows across over to the right, that's why you saw in the low spot of water in the tracks.
Yep, yep, okay.
And that's where culvert will go.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, okay, so we're okay with that. Um driveway at lot sixteen dash one at twelve hundred fifty six feet plus or minus and lot sixteen dash two at nine hundred eighty one feet plus or minus will not need culverts and will be swaled to allow ditch line water to flow.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, okay. Moving on then, uh driveway for lot sixteen dash one will be built wide, twenty feet minimum by forty feet deep minimum to act in conjunction with the forty foot or road south of driveway to act as a turnaround, so that's the turnaround.
Yeah, the forty, yeah.
Yep, okay, so we're okay with that. All right. Roadway to follow two thousand three town spec with a travelway of eighteen feet wide minimum, shoulder of two feet minimum, center of road to ditch line of fifteen feet. How do we address leaving what we discussed, trees and and.
Well, I think if you look at their other letter, they talk about the width.
Yep, that's the email, right?
That's that's the email, correct.
Yep.
We might be able to come up with some kind of a Gmail on that based on this. Again, the fire chief felt that if if the road was close to what is their existing uh the approved section, then it would not be a problem for the fire crews.
Okay, and Mr. Nash, if I read this correctly, you're saying it's sixteen and a half feet wide now?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Okay. So so why don't we change.
Put it this way, if they had a tractor trailer with my roof trusses or my house,
Yep.
they lay flat.
Yep.
Come from the southerly end and he could not turn around, so he drove straight through that road.
Okay.
That was four years ago, probably, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if a if a fire truck with this old road can't get through on a new road,
Yeah.
better get a new driver.
Um I'm just looking at uh it's interesting here how this is where it's southerly usable portion runs between thirteen and a half and seventeen and a half feet because I would think as you're going through improving that road, depending on trees, rocks, holders and where the stone wall is, that that road will vary in width too. And I would think we it would it would be useful to have some sort of leeway and not say it has to be blasted through at sixteen and a half feet all the way through because you can see how.
I get your point.
How even the southerly end goes wide, low, wide, you know, depending on what's going on on the side.
Right. Right.
And there's some beautiful trees, there's stone wall wonders, there's outcroppings of stone.
Yep.
I'm not sure it's it's useful to just say big flat uh if you're gonna try and keep the character of the road, so.
Yeah.
Um I don't I don't know if thirteen and a half is sufficient for the fire truck, but it seems to be for the southern end.
Yeah, certainly.
So if we said thirteen and a half to seventeen and a half, that gives you need to.
How about thirteen and a half to sixteen, which is.
What it is.
Yeah, what it is.
Okay.
Or, yep.
I don't.
I think to me that makes sense.
Yeah, I I think the the biggest concern is the mohang branches and things like that, right?
I've already got a genie left at the house, which I will.
Exactly, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And that obviously that's, you know, if you're gonna get dump trucks and stuff in there, building houses and
Mm hmm. Yeah.
delivering lumber and everything, it's gonna be taken care of anyway and.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not gonna, yeah, they're not gonna drive trusses down through, even though they've already had like that, you know.
So.
Right.
Yeah, but yeah, I I think that that something like that, because there are some pretty large trees in here.
Yep.
And you know, you start taking down all those big oaks and ashes and.
That's a little bit more, yeah.
Right, one of the lot, a lot of tree work there.
And just I'm sure what we're talking about here, when it says of the northern, the northerly end of Wyven Road, sixteen and a half feet wide, does that include the 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 two and a half feet or the two feet on either side? Or is it really twenty feet, you know, with the with the shoulders?
No, it was it was sixteen, what was the measure, sixteen.
Sixteen, the drivables.
Of the drivable space and then I'll put the foot on each side, go bring a page and it'll probably have more.
Well, that's what it was, that's what it was, they're saying that you have to do thirteen and a half to seven, fifteen and a half.
Yeah.
But then there's there's how many.
So your current, your current, your current approved section
Yeah.
is 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 it sixteen and a half feet travel portion and then foot on each side for shoulder?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so we'll change that uh second uh bullet point from shoulder of road to two feet minimum, shoulder of two feet minimum to shoulder of one foot minimum. And then the final bullet point is center of road to ditch line of fifteen feet.
Yeah, center of road, that's thirty feet wide.
That makes thirty feet wide, yes, that's still me.
Yeah.
No.
I saw them through that.
Thirty feet wide, those stone walls won't be gone.
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Certainly.
To the dead end, yeah.
That's what I was looking at, when he put that in there, I'm like, how the heck can you do this?
I'm gonna strike that off together.
So are you gonna make an agreement with your your purchasers down the road that you will three of you maintain that or how is that gonna work, who's gonna plow?
We'll figure that out when the time comes, when we sell, we'll do an agreement, it'll be stamped and documented and everything else in order to make sure that everybody gets a copy of whatever you guys need.
There should be a a road maintenance agreement with the town.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're gonna be involved in it at all, are we on maintenance?
No, no, you're not, no, not at all.
We shouldn't.
Then I I don't really care, I think you need to figure that out because I think part of the problem up on Hancock
Oh, I did.
was that they had to talk to each other, right, so one respect yourself and then.
Oh, no, I will, I will, I own the road, we told, a private road. So and I had other people that lived on it.
Yeah.
So we all, yeah, I yeah, I know, when you have good neighbors and you let people know ahead of time, if you're buying this land, you know, this road is private, private. And that will be in the sale of the land, saying it is private road. And now let them know, we'll come up with an agreement, who does what, what does where, and rest of the land.
But even with private roads, aren't there a road waiver, a road maintenance agreement required to be filed with the town?
So.
Or it's not required?
It's not required.
Got it.
When I built mine and they thought it was a class six and then I had the road agent come out.
A class six road waiver, right, maintenance.
And that, well, yes, if you're a class six, that's totally should be totally different
Got it.
because the town does only.
That's what I was saying, private.
So, but yeah.
Okay, private or.
All right, so continuing on.
So we need to change that dimension to make sense.
Center of road to ditch lines.
Yes. Or or just eliminate it completely.
Okay, strike that, if.
Because we found a road width, why do you need the center of the road to ditch line? Especially if there's no unnecessary ditch lines.
Right. All right, existing roads shown showed at test pit number one, one hundred forty feet from southwest corner of lot sixteen dash one.
That was going the other way.
Okay, so is that a leftover from the southern?
That's the old one, that's, yeah, we're not going that way now, well, don't plan on going the southern end, southern, that, so that's what that was.
Understood, yeah. Okay, how about the last one, which is.
The two of them are the southern end.
They are, okay.
Because I dug both of them.
Understood, okay. All right, and then the final um road base to be cleared of trees, stumps, organics and machine raked of six inch and larger cobbles slash rock. Twelve inch minimum of base gravel topped with six inch minimum of one and a half CBR gravel at ledge crossing eleven hundred ninety three feet, top over with six inch minimum, inch and a half CBR gravel.
He wants eighteen inches of gravel, that's overkill.
Okay.
That's, and I.
I can't speak to that, CBR is just like, that's that California standard for crushed rock or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
It's crushed bank rock, it's.
Not crushed bank rock, yeah.
Yeah, so um eighteen inches is the road standard by the by the town. These are the road, the the road agent has the road standards that are developed by the planning board and he tries to build any new roads to those road standards. Um there are certainly cases just like this where you don't have to follow those standards. So um he uses those standards as a matter of fact and it's up to the board to make it so they don't know.
Understood, what are you proposing, Mr. Nash?
I say twelve inches, where I need it, total to thickness, if I need it more in certain areas, because coming down the hill on the the first northerly end is all hard gravel. The bottom I will actually put more because it's low.
I understand.
Going up, because it's a solid ledge that goes up and over, I'll up to six inches and that's what he recommended.
He recommended six inches.
Because it's not gonna, it's not gonna get ruined, you know what I mean, and stuff, so it it varies where you go.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And stuff, and that's why I already have um the crushed stone which you guys went down and you saw or went into my property and dumped a big pile of it over there and stuff already and stuff. It's to use in areas that I need to use it to make sure everything is solid.
Yeah.
Okay. So how do we word this, so.
So I I think the 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 first part, we are removing all the organic matter and everything else.
Yep.
And then maybe you could, as far as thickness would vary, um so to no less than twelve inches.
Yeah.
Okay, that works for me, yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, so I can go, I can go
Yes. Where the less is the least.
six inches, right?
Right.
Over the over the ledge, yeah.
On the ledge area.
Yeah, yeah.
So no less than six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense, and that's the.
No less than twelve inches and um except where ledge is and with a minimal coverage of six inches over the ledge.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Was that the last point?
Yeah, was the last point.
So how does this now get reworded, does John have to check it again and then.
So I will work with my notes, Cal's notes and John and we'll craft a new one and then have the Nash's look at it and make sure they agree and then come back and you guys decide.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time, well, sure work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys very much.
Good, thank you guys. All right, I'll give that back to you.
Watch out for those rails out there out there.
Yeah.
Jeez.
Yeah, I asked him about it.
I'm a fisherman.
Oh, okay.
And so viral video that, you know, we have ready on both.
Oh, I saw that.
Oh, yeah, everybody's seen it, that's my fault.
Yeah, or. Lame it on top of it, and that's in the air, yeah.
Wow, you had to check it out. All right, guys, thank you so much.
Good night.
All righty, thank you.
All right.
I don't blame you. All right.
Enough, John?
Yes, have a good evening.
Okay, thanks, John.
Come on, this is just getting, getting to the good part. It's time to eat some dinner.
See you, Rich.
Yeah.
Were you ready to wrap?
All right, Danny, you're up.
Are we ready to pack things up, okay, all right.
Come on down.
Thank you, Gail, we leave them too.
Bye, Gail.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Gail, we'll see you on Wednesday, right?
Yes, all right, is there anyone there tomorrow?
I will be there tomorrow.
Just you.
Uh I don't know.
We'll figure it out, yes, Wednesday for sure.
All right, thank you.
So I had emailed out some documents, but I have them in hard copies, I do.
Do you have copies? Oh, okay.
Would you want me to scan them out?
Yes, yes.
It's gonna make sure I keep them for myself.
Did I print?
Where'd you see it?
No, I did print them out.
Today?
Yeah.
Today?
What was that?
Oh, no.
Um, no, I think I did it last Thursday.
I somehow missed that, yeah.
No worries. All right.
I think I, I think I printed mine out because I'm more.
Oh, did you, oh, why, I love them because I think I only did.
I did print them out.
What was it, what was it?
Unfortunately, look, my 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 color ones are, I know.
Oh, should we, you glasses will straighten out it.
I need three D glasses to be like, bring us the the color room.
Oh, you got it?
Okay, all right. I'm very hard, you're just running out, so it's, I'm surprised you.
If you have questions. So we're gonna dive deep into charitable exemptions, okay?
Okay.
Um charitable exemptions are tough. The the they're they're never just black and white, so Shaker Village to me is one of those gray areas and I will tell you for years and years and years, it's always just been exempt under the charitable exemption, everything.
Everything. Okay.
The lands, the buildings, all of it. Um a few years ago when they put, well, I think this was almost ten years ago, when they put in the restaurant
Mm hmm.
and it was be, you know, I had information that it was a private lease um and that a business was running out of there.
So that's the restaurant across the road, not the one that was in the.
This is the one where now the daycare is, the preschool, sorry, the preschool, Dewey School.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um at that time, we had actually sent them a tax bill for just that portion of the property.
Yeah.
I remember we had legal counsel talk to us about that one, but very quickly, um Shaker Village turned it into, they they enrolled it into something to do with a culinary school. And that was appropriate, it wiped it right off the tax bill and they got to remain exempt. Last summer, when I heard that the cafe was going in the Creamery building,
Mm hmm. Yep.
that sort of sent up a red flag to me, so last September, Ken was there, building inspector, Chief Gamash.
Yeah.
We all went over there and took a pretty extensive tour of of all of the buildings. Um and I asked the questions that I that I needed to ask and what I walked away with, um I detailed on the sheet that says finance.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Every year, every year annually, um
Yeah.
Shaker Village has to send in an A nine form and an A um A twelve, they are a state form. One of them is applying for the exemption, for the charitable exemption and then the other one is sort of a financial statement where they have to prove that they are deserving of this charitable exemption. And there's certain things that I have to look for through all of that um to make sure that it goes in line with the RSA on charitable exemptions and New Hampshire's definition of charitable. So everything that I found, I put on, I detailed on that sheet, um of areas that I thought would no longer qualify under a charitable exemption.
So there's five. Um and and what I didn't understand when I looked at this is all the acres of vacant land up at the top, you didn't have a problem with those? Or you did, I couldn't, and if you did, I couldn't understand what the problem was.
Let's call it a gray area.
Okay.
They, um I don't have all of the current use information from nineteen eighty two, but in nineteen eighty two, all of Shaker Village land, all of the fields up there was enrolled in current use. So that wouldn't lead me to believe, but I don't know, let me let me back up because I don't know really what the status of that property was back in nineteen eighty two, were there still Shakers living there?
One or two, right?
Ninety six, I think, was the last sister, didn't it?
Yeah.
Because when we moved there in ninety, there were still two.
Okay, all right. I would think if they enrolled it in current use, they knew that they were subject to taxation on it. Um it has since, I don't know when, been wiped off of the tax rule and it all sits in there as um exempt lands.
With no current use change?
Being applied to it.
Just wiped out.
No, it's just, it's just wiped off as as a hundred percent charitable exempt, yes, yes.
Exempt.
And then the other buildings, um the horse barn and and all of the buildings up there are numbered and have names, so I'm just stuck with the numbers and the names.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
Um the horse barn is used for private functions, weddings, et cetera. Um Andy's apartment is is located in the trustees' office, is that what they call that building?
Mm hmm.
In the basement level.
The brick building.
The brick building, um when I spoke.
Yeah. Across the road or on the, I mean.
Although across.
Across the road, yeah, um when I spoke to Todd who had given us a tour of that, he had told me that Andy is not an employee
In the west side.
Yeah.
of Shaker Village, he at one time was the master gardener there. He no longer is the master gardener there, he grows stuff at the village.
Oh, so that's Andy Messenger, who's there now, Andy's apartment?
I don't, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um and then and then to go on, the east house was used as the director's house um at that time, and if you go up back up to the top, I give a little blurb there about how the director um on their IRS forms is named as an officer.
As an officer, yeah.
So that's sort of is in direct contradiction of of the RSA, so.
Hmm.
Interesting.
Yeah, I compiled this all together, um and we. Yeah, I compiled this all together um and we sent Shaker Village a tax bill. And that tax bill equated to about seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand and nine dollars, I have the.
Yeah.
And that would only be for half the year, Shaker Village would get another seven thousand dollar um tax bill at the end of this actually.
Which is a one question that I had was in their um rebuttal to all of this was.
Yes. Yes.
That they did not receive a formal notice of the change from exempt to non-exempt until they got the bill and I was, do we have to give them formal notice?
We don't and quite honestly, I I sort of didn't want to engage in an appeal before.
We actually.
A bill had even gone out.
Okay, I just didn't know if we would with if we were required, I would have assumed if we were required to, you would have.
So and that's just it too, in in their rebuttal, they are wishing to appeal, but but. Properly, they can't appeal this tax bill. Um, they can ask the select board for reconsideration. Um, you can't appeal until your final notice of tax. So they would have to actually receive their December tax bill, pay it or not pay it, however they wanna do it. And then follow the appeal process that they had until March first to file their abatement with the town, a formal abatement. And um and then from there, if the town denied the abatement application, then they then prior to September first of twenty twenty-five. Um, they could file with the Board of Tax and Land Appeals or Superior Court.
So are they hoping by this rebuttal to not even have the tax bill go out?
I think I think they're hoping that um with their rebuttal.
Do I get?
The select board would decide that that how they state that they're using the buildings at Shaker Village now. As of this year, because they've had some changes over the year, um that it would put them back as exempt status. So if. But the tax bill is how the buildings were have been used in the past year. So it's it's hard, it's hard because you still have to do your assessing as of April first.
Based.
And when they apply for their exemption every year.
Yeah.
Um, by April. They're applying for the exempt status for the upcoming year tax year.
Coming year.
Gotcha.
And at that point. One of the points was at that point when they were they were the um.
Their.
The executive district dis.
Their tax. Yes.
Director was listed as officer.
Yes, yes, but they also said that as of that time, that house was vacant. Because the executive director had already gone.
Right.
Um, the cafe had already stopped or down, yeah, the cafe was no longer operating.
Dropped or did, yeah.
Um, the and and the two barns that were holding private functions um are no longer being rented.
Ah.
And they're currently still without a director, right?
Yes.
Or is it? They have, may they, right, yeah.
Close. Yes, it's coming.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know if we're going to get this settled tonight, um.
Yeah.
It because I also included in here some case law for you um to go through and and the four factors. That, you know, it's a four factor test that that gets way to to determine if something falls under charitable. Cause like I said, it it isn't it isn't black and white, it's a lot of discretion in going, okay, does it is it for the public well for, you know, the public good? Um, all of those sorts of things. I have, I I will tell you, Shaker Village has always been very good about sending in their paperwork. Um, so I have their restated articles of agreement and in all of that, um, I didn't wanna bombard you guys with paperwork, but.
Oh, I didn't print, I didn't print out the one with the case law. Um, because it's i- interesting if, you know.
Do you want my copy?
Yeah, can I just have that?
Yes. I read it all before you got here, I forgot this, thank you, Mandy.
Um, so. If when you assessed it, when you actually physically went out and looked at the barn. Like the north um barn that was still being used for weddings and functions at that time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, but now they're saying it's no longer being used for that function.
Correct.
As of this moment, but that's not precluding them from suddenly using it for that. Purpose and I mean.
Right. And that's the other thing with a charitable exemption is there really is no threshold as far as um.
I don't know.
If they rent out that space to nonprofits seventy-five percent of the time, but twenty-five percent of the time, they hold private weddings and events there. The town can decide if they feel as though they've they've met the burden and it could be. Exempted a hundred percent as a charitable.
But how do you even know? Okay.
No.
You're right, here's the gray area. Okay, and you know, again, the um.
Yeah.
You know, the um. You know, I I looked at their their reasoning for the for for the gardener.
Yes.
Being, you know, that they they are required to have a um, where is it?
Yeah.
The garden, no. Uh.
It's that for Andy's apartment, at number fifteen, it's the last, it's the last one. The farmer who prefer prefers an independent contractor status to fulfills the village mandates.
Yes. Building mandate, maintain a garden, but.
In exchange, yeah.
But it's not necessarily a Shaker garden or Shaker inspired or Shaker practices, I mean. We, he's got beautiful stuff, he sells at the farmer's market, he's a certified genetic farmer, it's wonderful, but does that meet their.
Right. Yeah. And I will tell you, I think this is where you guys might be a little bit more knowledgeable of the the history of Shaker Village.
I don't know.
The practices that have gone on there, um, I only look at it every year just for this purpose. Um, I'm not up on all of the events that have taken place there or. How it's changed or grown over the years or.
We know, all we can rely on from this anyways, how they say they are currently um not planning to use.
Right.
But that doesn't. Does that weigh in on how you assessed it as of April, how they were using it then? Does that does that change how the tax bill might be for this year and would that would the status change again if they don't use it?
Yes, I mean, and that, the only thing I can say, when they fill out their A nine form every year, they have every opportunity to get. Very detailed in what buildings they qualify, what buildings they're applying for this exemption.
Yeah.
Um, their primary use and duration, um. I've been very lackadaisical with this paperwork over the years, um, I mean, this was what they filled out la- this past year. And it literally just says one map and lot number, ten acres, museum, education and preservation. And that is it.
Uh.
So I mean, I know that going forward, I can certainly do a better job of requiring a more detailed list of what buildings do you have? What are you using them for?
What kind of education, what kind what kind of?
We we've sent two uh letters to the liquor commissioner. One in May and one in June allowing um anytime anytime they wanna sell alcohol up there.
Mm-hmm.
The the caterer has to get a letter from the municipality that that is aware that they're selling liquor. And so there's been two events, again, one in May and one in June, that we've had to send letters to the vendors. Which is a letter to the liquor commission saying that that where where they're selling alcohol up there. Don't say what the event is, but there's been two events within so far this year where they're selling alcohol.
Yeah, that's easy, and I mean, one of them was like the Simply Shaker, which is in the beginning of the year and open the season.
And I don't know where the event was or what building it was in or or anything, but just.
From members and stuff, I think that might that would depend.
Yeah. It could be a charitable thing, whatever, auction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but but there are there are events going on up there that that they do have caterers coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how do we um go from this point forward?
Well, it's.
We've got all this excellent information, both hers and theirs, because theirs is very specific about how they can.
Sure. So it's. So I would I would tell you right now, you guys have the opportunity to reconsider the tax bill that has been sent to them. If you feel as though um what David Katz has supplied is sufficient enough to to approve the charitable status. And change it all back to um exempt. Based on what he said, um, or we. Sort of do nothing and we issue a bill in December and then let just that formal appeal process start. If they so choose.
I personally wanna read through this all again, because I read through it once.
Yes. I agree.
I I think you just after we.
Exactly, went, okay, just a lot.
Yeah, and I have and I have no problem meeting on this, I mean, I I will tell you, I am not an expert in institutional exemptions. Um, I just don't have enough experience in all the different types of charitable properties that there could be. Um, I did reach out to our Department of Revenue and asked if they would come to the meeting tonight just to give us some clarity on. Um, on the RSA's, not make a decision for us, but just give us some clarity on the RSA's and they just kindly let me know that they don't do that. Sorry, but go do that.
Well.
I I didn't say anything, I literally didn't even respond back, so um, no, I mean, there is case law.
Yeah.
But do they have, do they have a department like um NHMA, if you have a question, you can say.
They are the Department of Revenue Property Appraisal.
Take over. But you can, is there.
They oversee what I do.
Right, but is there some.
But they won't give us any advice.
They they're advisory only.
They oversee.
Oh.
Yeah.
But in this case, they.
They're not advisors.
They don't want to advise.
Could not advise.
Yeah.
So.
Not helping.
Yeah, I am absolutely willing to show you the case law that I have on this, um, all all of the research that I've done and read and. But I mean, you just don't have an exact case of a Shaker, well, let me put it to you this way, Enfield there. I don't know if they call it Shaker Village, but they're Shaker property over there, um, they exempt everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
I looked at every single card, it's all exempted and I I myself have attended a private wedding in one of those barns before, so.
Interesting. Yeah.
Um, the pilot yearly files.
So I was I was gonna bring that up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
We have a a payment lieu of taxes that they give us every year, two thousand dollars. They paid it in April for on April first. Their tax bill was seven thousand and nine dollars. We got a check from them for these taxes for five thousand and nine dollars, so. So they're using they're using the payment lieu of taxes. And the check they sent us to pay their taxes, which talking to the tax collector. That doesn't work.
How do you use a payment in lieu of taxes to pay for taxes?
They're two. Correct, they're two different things, so right now, they have unpaid taxes in the amount of two thousand dollars on this tax bill. Which is uh generating interest and penalties.
From, and so that's the um.
This is the this is the June.
June tax bill.
Yeah.
And what have they done in the past? What did they do with last?
We did a good tax bill, actually.
December tax bill, so they didn't get one, so this is.
This is their first tax bill for this from June.
And the second one?
There will be a second one if we do not.
Will be.
In the second line, in December, November, for December.
If we do not.
In November.
So if I wanted to get a a longer explanation, not right here and now, about what pilot and in lieu of taxes entails, who do I ask, Sam? Because what, why were they paying, I don't understand what in lieu of taxes.
A lot of a a lot of uh exempt properties, the Spruces, for instance.
Yeah.
Um, they use town services.
Yeah.
The town plows the road. All the things that the town, the reason the town collects taxes. A lot of those, those services still exist for those exempt properties. So in order to help out the municipality, these exempt organizations will give a payment in lieu of taxes.
And who decides how what that payment is, the organization or the town?
That is something that that's negotiated between the town, between the municipality and the and the organization.
Negotiate, negotiate, got it.
Um, some don't, um, I know that like in the town of Osmond, all the county buildings, those are all exempt buildings. The nursing home, the the county jail, all those all tho- those structures up there are exempt, same thing for the city of Concord.
Exempt exempt and no in lieu of taxes.
All the. All the same buildings are exempt and they do not pay, the city of Concord does not collect any money from the state. Or if or any of that state property that the state owns, so same thing with with Osmond, with the county, so.
So at some point, we had a negotiation with Shaker Village to figure out what their in lieu of.
At some point, there was a negotiation with Shaker Village.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
As a matter of fact, not saying it's too off topic, but um the RSA that the Spruces falls under. Actually states in it that you will negotiate, you will, you shall negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes with them every single year.
Hmm.
And if they don't. How's that read? If they don't, if they don't agree with what the town says, this is what we'd like you to pay. Um, they have to pay a minimum of ten percent, there's a formula, it lays it it lays it right out there of what it's supposed to be. Ten percent of what the actual tax would be if it was just on the tax roll.
And is there such a requirement on Shaker Village? Should they be there in lieu of taxes being renegotiated every?
We haven't.
Yeah. We haven't, but what does it say? Like if you say the Spruce.
It doesn't say anything.
It doesn't say.
No, no, um, Shaker Village, yeah, Shaker Village solely falls under seventy-two, twenty-three and twenty-three I.
Because it's a charitable. Okay.
There were a few years that they did not pay it and um I think it was when they were in a transition of an executive director. And the town reminded them.
Yeah.
Um, that they had historically paid it and they did.
Yeah, I think I chased them down for paperwork those few years.
Right, did.
Did they pay in arrears?
Nope.
They just paid going forward from that town.
Yes, yeah.
I know they came down at one point and reshingled the bandstand, I believe, and put new handrails on it, did they? As a little taxes, I believe.
I would like you. Oh.
I I don't know.
I know Gail rumbles about it, cause they didn't do what was there, they changed things.
Yeah, so the so the big thing with um a charitable property. Under seventy-two, twenty-three is the own used and occupied by them directly for the purpose of which they are established. So every single one of those buildings up there has to be looked at in that manner, own used and occupied for the purpose.
So even the restaurant that at one point was um run or used by the culinary school.
Yes.
That doesn't count necessarily because it's not a shape, it's not the purpose for.
It only it only would in that this RSA continues on to say. Unless you have a entity or an organization in that building that would qualify for the exemption on its own.
For its own exemption, not like the like the culinary school.
Yeah, so so like a non-exempt property can go into another non-exempt property, not non-sole.
Okay. Even if the exemptions are different.
Because. Yes, okay.
Mm.
Like a culinary school is obviously not a Shaker, but okay, got it.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot more we need to learn.
Mm-hmm.
What a great job deciding a lot of stuff in there.
Mandy, when you um when you guys walked through.
Yeah.
You only found Andy living there, correct? That was the only.
That was Andy's apartment, there in that building, there are a few other apartments.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um, that were, the information that was told to me was that they were artist in residence. Um, or if visitors came to do something at the village, that's where they were put.
Did you get into the apartments? I'm just curious.
No, no, no.
Cause that's where I'm trying to think of the name of the woman who lived there who was almost like a caretaker, there's no more caretaker role there.
Um. Not that I, no, not that I recall.
There's no one stay other than Andy living on the property.
Um, so there's so there's Todd um Mafaleto, he was the one who took us around.
Yeah.
Right, who's Todd, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And he has an apartment above the the creamery building, the cafe.
Yeah. Right.
Um, but he did tell me shortly after our visit that Shaker Village. Made his apartment or residence a requirement of the job to live there.
Correct.
Well, that's what they're also saying about the executive director, correct?
Correct.
That said, that's why it's not pecuniary, however you say that word.
Well.
Pecuniary?
Yeah, the the problem that I had with that is that it historically, every year when they send in their IRS forms, they um. Check off the executive director as an officer.
Yeah.
And that that's in direct contradiction of the RSA.
Which of course, they're saying they had to check that box, so.
Correct. And they also said that they don't think I should use the IRS form to decide, but I don't know, and I and believe me, I don't know.
But why wouldn't you?
I don't know any other place where um the officers are labeled.
Right.
So.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so.
So yes, if any of you would ever like to come into my office and sit down with a file and.
The light reading?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I think this is a lot of information to to digest. Um, so I I think we need to. Um, so I I think we need to table it for now and invite Mandy back at a a later date.
Well, did we also, um, and I think um David Katz's letter says he would like to come in and, yeah, uh, say his side.
I was gonna, I was gonna mention that, that that they would like to meet with you.
Yeah.
Correct.
I I felt it would be more appropriate to have Mandy here to put you in on her research and her work.
Yep.
Yeah, yes. And I also don't know, um, I know I would feel comforted by town council, but that's just me. Um, and only because there are so many different little attributes to this.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm not, well, I shouldn't say that I'm not a tax professional, technically I am, but I'm not like an accounting tax professional on nonprofit status.
Yes.
Well, and then would would town council be the person to weigh in on it? Uh, you need a tax person more than a town council person, correct?
They have a law firm that we deal with as uh lawyers that specialize.
Oh, they must have, yeah, yeah.
In different, different areas of this law, whether personnel or land use or.
Charitable?
Yeah, I would hope so, I would, I would guess, yeah.
There is, there is more and more case law on this coming down, coming down the, like, if not in the past year, in the past couple of years. It's continuing on, um, and only because these things got ignored in towns for years and years and years.
Yeah.
And then the Board of Tax and Land Appeals started to kind of hold these towns on the fire and say, you know.
Yeah.
Why would you need us charitable?
Yeah, so maybe a plan to move forward would be to invite Mr. Katz. And then after that, we can, we're, you know, certainly in the meantime, anybody that that has time and the inclination can come see Mandy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would we want, um, would we want whatever uh tax department from our council weigh in first? So that we have that information even before we hear what Mr. Katz has to say? Does it matter the order?
I think he's weighed in, or they, Shaker Village has weighed in with their rebuttal.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, rather.
I mean, we can send all of this to our law firm and see if they have an opinion one way or the other, and you guys can decide what to do then, or.
Yeah. We did that with the restaurant, I still have the paperwork on that. And that's all they did was they they just sort of rendered an opinion that, you know, it it does appear to be within the town's rights to, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just gonna give you a little backup, so.
Yeah.
Do we have enough in the in the legal line to allow another?
I, you know, but that's, I mean, that's, like I said, I mean, really, they can't do, they can't start their formal appeal until their final notice of tax, which would be their tax bill that they're gonna receive in November, December.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so technically, this isn't really something that we have to dive into until next year.
Yeah.
So, go ahead, sorry. So the rest of us are gonna see a fairly large tax increase coming, right?
School tax.
School tax.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, would they see the same thing on theirs, or how would that work?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the total tax rate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what they're paying taxes on is a is a portion of
Right.
that property, still, I mean, I'm sure ninety-seven percent of it is still exempt from taxation.
Yeah.
I would like to work with them though on the current use, um.
Well, it seems to be um, it would everybody to get that nailed down, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Um, and I wouldn't mind putting this off for several reasons, um, not least of which is see how the new executive director, which I think is shortly uh weighs in on this.
Yes, yep.
Um, and what direction they want to
Yeah.
uh go in dealing with the town on matters such as this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also, it's, it cannot go unsaid that knowing that Shaker Village is always strapped for cash, I'm sure they would appreciate not having a tax bill.
Right.
Um, if it's doable, I don't know, but I I think all those things weighing together means not a hasty decision on this one.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But thank you for for going out and touring and looking at all this, and I think it was helpful to do this.
Well, I might have made this information well enough, I.
Oh, yeah, it's, it, like you said, because there's, yeah, beginning, it's, right, there's a lot to it, and a little bit of shades of gray.
It was a lot, there's a lot to it. Yeah.
I want some color dinks.
What's that?
Color dinks.
Okay, fine, yeah. Minor highlighted, I'll tell you that.
Oh, right.
Yeah, mine, I got the yellow all over here, I think I, I think that was it. It was really helpful though also to have, um, I'm assuming that this one, Canterbury Shaker Village Appeal of Property Assessments and Check was very helpful for you too, to have them spell out how they believe it or how they present, and that they're doing this.
Absolutely, so so and that, and that was a a, the result of David Katz and I speaking over the phone and I emailed him everything that I had.
Yeah.
Um, and then, yeah, he was able to kind of sort of form a rebuttal from that information, so, yeah.
Yeah, so it makes, I mean, I'd like to, this is one side of it, this all makes sense, but yeah, you know, how that jives with everything else, I don't yet know, but it was, it's really handy to have all this.
Agreed.
Great.
So, how would you like us to see?
When are we gonna start working on budgets?
I'm gonna have to communicate with Mr. Katz at some point.
Yeah.
What?
When are we gonna be starting to work on budgets and stuff like that?
Uh, I was gonna bring up that I'd like to get the budget committee in for us meeting in December, I mean, September.
September.
So we should have it maybe decided before that, or does it matter?
If the tax bill goes out in December?
If tax bill goes out in December, I mean, you can, as Mandy said, the the formal appeal process can be put off until two thousand twenty-five.
It probably takes us that long to figure it out, don't you think?
That that happens. Wow. Yeah, and.
I think it's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
You know, it. We can say that that, look, we're gonna take them, take this under advisement and.
Right.
If you wanna invite them in and chat with them, you can, uh, but then take it under advisement and.
Yeah.
And that most likely, uh, independent, that the formal appeal process does not start until two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah.
And you'll have a decision by then.
That's what, that's kind of what I had envisioned, is if you guys didn't immediately say, no, let's, let's change it back to exempt that, we would just follow up with a letter to him, letting him know of the actual appeal process.
Yeah.
Oh, and the timing.
And, yeah. They've been advised on the um, the pilot not being applied to their taxes, right? They're aware of.
I have not done that yet.
Okay.
So if we do not, if we change nothing, they'll get a December tax bill and then the appeal process starts. But what happens about the June tax bill?
So there's there's technically two thousand dollars that have not been paid. Um, again, it's generating interest and penalties. That can be abated by the Board of Selectmen, uh, when the time comes, uh, if if you feel that that's necessary. I can let them know that that just because they filed the pilot or paid the pilot in April, that does not have any effect on the June tax bills they receive. Um, and and that they're generating that interest and penalties. Um, it's up to you guys how you want us to handle it.
So I think, I think in the interest of fairness and transparency, we should advise them of that, okay? I think that's, that's the fairest thing to to do.
Yeah.
I would like to ask Mr. Katz to come in, but I think also in the meantime, we do send everything to our attorney
Okay.
and and have them get started looking at it.
Agreed.
And then, as as I think we're all in doing it, this is not gonna be a quick decision. This is gonna be a, a lot of research and some back and forth.
It just, it just seems um kind of unfortunate that there's a June tax bill and then the December one is the one that we're going to send
Have to wait on.
and wait on, and that's when the appeals process starts and, you know, does, does anything go hap- say, say it.
Yeah.
Alright, that's, that's a discussion for another day, whatever happens with the appeal process.
Yeah.
Does that affect in arrears, anything they may have paid or not paid in June? Or does the June tax bill stand by itself?
Well, we have to.
No, so.
Okay.
Your, the June tax bill is almost like a good faith payment that you make to the town where your December tax bill is your actual tax bill.
Got it.
June is just a part of credit for the year.
So the fact that it's too grand short is not as big a deal as it might be otherwise.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, whatever you've just said, yes.
Alright, thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy, you guys done?
Yeah.
No.
We'll, we'll.
There's no more.
We'll obviously get done.
No, wait, uh, let's see, we're, we're here on the agenda.
There's more. Oh, thank God.
There's this.
Busy night.
Bye, Mandy.
Bye, thank you.
Good night, Mandy.
Say hello to Veli Veli.
Will do.
Alright, so that brings us to new business then, right?
Yeah, and what you wanna do for millions.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, yes, and thank you for bringing me back to that.
Yes, yes.
Check those out.
Somewhere, I don't know, Kelly.
That was in the blue folder?
I have the blue folder.
That one, I have it.
And so each of you have it in your public folders. I think we put the the public ones and the executive section ones together.
Alright. Yep, yep. Alright, so I'm gonna try to, we're gonna try something new and see if we can can cut our time a little bit. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the public minutes from July fifteen, July twenty-three and July thirtieth as amendment.
Um, and the amendment is on line two thirty-six of the July fifteenth. I spelled Dale Caswell wrong, so I'm just gonna fix that one.
Ah.
I see, yeah.
I also did have one question on the uh fifteenth minutes, the minutes of the fifteenth.
Alright, which line?
Uh, one twenty-seven. And also one fifty-two uh to one fifty-four, I don't know if they need to say the same thing. Um, line one twenty-seven is all three sites would provide one hundred percent of the power needed, uh which, which might have been what he said, but is not actually, if you look at one fifty-two to one fifty-four, um, the with it's, that's, any site that's approved would be one hundred percent of the town's municipal needs with the solar panels we already have. So it's like, be- because um Tom Franco said that the um the grant you couldn't apply for.
Yeah.
Just correct it, you would know.
I don't think so.
It's, it's like, it can't be a hundred percent of the entire town's needs. You see, it.
So what are you suggesting?
No, I know exactly what you mean, um.
I'm just saying that um all three sites would provide like a hundred percent of the.
So we either need to rephrase that or strike that because it says it later.
Yes.
Well, then we're always, they're only proposing two, two sites now.
At the time, we're proposing three.
Okay, so we're just gonna leave, okay.
Yeah, we can, we can only do lots, but the only, the only thing that I wanted to make clear is
Yeah.
that the, everything that was proposed, it was a hundred percent of the municipal needs if, when it, when you included what the ten percent that the current panels are already generating. And it says that in line one fifty-two to one fifty-four, it just seemed like they shouldn't match.
Right.
The grant requires the array, uh, however, the new array plus the power from the old array would cover one hundred percent of the current municipal usage. And that's all, but.
So are you happy with that?
I'm happy with that one, yes.
Okay, so what are you suggesting we correct then?
Uh, one twenty-seven, um.
So suggest a correction.
So, can I offer a?
Yes, please do.
So all three sites would provide a hundred percent of the power needed, comma, um.
In combination with.
In, in combination with the existing array.
The existing array.
Yes.
It's not as quick to me.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then those two sections agree. That's all, and that was the only change.
Alright, so.
So, so your motion is still the same because of as amended those two.
I was just gonna say, as amended, yeah.
Yes, and your, your typo, yes.
Looking for a second.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on.
Aye.
So, uh, we're looking at the non-public meeting minutes from July fifteenth and July twenty-third. Looking for any amendments. Katz, anything from you?
No, I'm sure.
Alright, then, I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from July fifteenth and July twenty-third.
So moved.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright.
And then the motion to seal the minutes is already in the minute, so we don't need to do that again.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, back to each.
And I do want the executive section ones back and somewhere in there, you should also have the um special town meeting ones that Sam did, I think I only put a copy in our folder, um, Scott.
Okay.
It's a single page.
Yep, alright, so, alright, so I'll pass that so everybody can take a look.
Um, you just want to.
And then I'll make a motion that we approve the uh July fifteenth special town meeting procedural detail meeting minutes.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I seconded, yes.
Aye.
Um.
Sorry, I made the motion, so. Just put it in. Right, thank you, sir. You've.
I haven't seen the beer. This is the most succinct bunch of minutes I think I've ever read.
It was very short, maybe.
Lovely.
Alright. Alright, and then, so we're through then previous minutes approval, moving on to new business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, uh, first item is request for camping at the end of West Road.
Yes, uh, back in June, I've got a request for camping, uh, from.
But not in order of.
The, yeah, the, uh, Masons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Sonic Lodge and in Hillsworlds.
Yeah.
Um. I sent this to the Conservation Commission.
I remember.
They said that they uh didn't have a problem with it as long as there was no campfires or carry-in and carry-out. Um, it said here in his request, um, let's see. They're highly skilled outdoors of conservation, having utmost respect for the environment, not only use time, leave no trace, we actively look to make a better place, thank you for your consideration. So, again, um, the only conservation said was no campfires and and um.
And no open pit fires, but like they could use camp stove.
Yeah, no, no campfires and and carry-in and carry-out.
Everything, especially human waste, since there'd be fifteen people.
Yeah. So, so.
So does this count the river in the thing?
Yes, down at the end of West Road, down uh by where the old bridge was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got a campground or a place there?
Well, there's, there's a beach there that they pull up and camp on, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So it's, it's public property, it's not.
It's, it's the town property.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But but that, the conservation talked about that like last month, did that, did their concerns go to the Masons? Have they replied?
I haven't, I have not sent, I brought to you guys, you were, the Board of Selectmen are the ones that authorize any kind of camping or anything like that on public land.
Oh, okay.
Conservation is advisory only, right?
Alright.
So do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to decide whether you allow it and if there's any restrictions.
Alright. So. Alright, so I'll make a motion that we allow with the restrictions of no open fires and carry-in, carry-out. Everything that that comes in limits.
As advised by the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next item, request from EverSource for extended hours of work on transmission lines, I thought we dealt with that.
Uh, they want another one. Uh, they are looking for weeks of August fifth and September tenth. Uh, August fifth is this week, so they're looking for seven AM to seven PM and Sundays as needed. Uh, it would not be every day, if they don't plan on Sundays, would like that permission should they come across an unexpected delay. Uh, crews will be pulling wire out onto the new structures. The equipment used will be bucket trucks and a wire roller to pull the wire across the stands. So a little heavy equipment, just the trucks and.
Yeah, and the rollers are in place at the land.
But they've been doing it. Yeah.
Yep, see, yeah, so.
And um, why do they need to request extended hours from us to do that?
Cause when their regular work hours on Monday through Friday, and I believe they quit at five o'clock, that is their regular work hours. So this is uh, this is a change from when they started the project, we got notification of what their work hours would be.
Right.
And said that if there was anything outside that, they would notify us.
And so they're just no, they're, they're just saying they're gonna be working longer, his residents ask? I mean, it's not like, it's noisy or anything.
They're, they're asking, it's okay.
We give permission.
No, I realize that, but why, what are we giving permission for, the fact that they're just going to be there longer than they thought they were in the beginning during the day? It's not louder or anything, or?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Well, and they're only gonna be using, I mean, they have, they have different equipment that they use on different parts of the project, but they're not gonna be using cranes or anything like that, they make a lot of noise.
Alright.
Right.
Okay.
They're just gonna be using the trucks to pull them.
And that doesn't affect um uh the police force, or we don't have any flaggers or people or anything, they do everything.
No, they have all people, yeah, yeah.
Alright. Yeah, go EverSource.
So that's okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
Do we need to motion it and second it and vote it, or just okay?
Nope. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, next item of correspondence from Jesse Tischko regarding Kimbo Pond mowing.
Yes, uh the, there was a group that had Jesse Tischko who has this uh library summer reading program Fishing Day every year.
Yeah.
For the past few years. And uh she reached out a couple of weeks ago or a couple of weeks before and asked if uh the highway property mowed, the lawn and everything around there, and they did. And uh she just wanted to make sure that, she said thank you, wanted wanted selectmen to know that they did a great job and so thank you very much.
Was that Bowden who was mowing probably?
Yes, it was Bowden that mowed.
Bowden mows everything, he's been doing a great job.
Yup.
Thank you, Bowden.
Cool. Alright, next item, correspondence from Conservation Commission regarding Riverlands maintenance.
Did we have that to read?
Ryan Paxinger, that should be
Oh, yeah, yeah.
New business folder. Um, not your folder, but
Oh, no.
Is that the new business?
The back of ours.
Gotcha.
Oh, that's correctly made.
They're gonna be doing some maintenance out of the Riverlands.
Oh, that's this, okay.
Is there another work today?
Not so far. Looks like they're just advising us.
I made that date, but I'm only kidding, your work your work days are flat.
Okay. It looks like they're advising us that they will be doing more, so we probably won't turn up, okay.
Well, they're um they're very good at at wanting to do it in the fall when there's less bugs.
Makes sense.
To get more people, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yes. 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 I think we'll discuss it the last meeting. Does Brian that Christianson live in town?
No.
No, he said Pembroke?
Uh, I think so, yeah, something close by, yeah.
Okay. Okay. There's just that Christianson up on uh Back to Strobe, I was wondering if that's him. Yep.
Alright, next item is a request from Casa of New Hampshire for funds.
Hmm.
So I'll read you guys, it's a very short email, um from the Casa of New Hampshire, which they don't say what that organization is.
Can we
Uh, we, that's
No, court-appointed
And children, yeah.
No, court-appointed, I can never remember Ellen, um
It's the it's the people who um volunteer you volunteer to be
Court-appointed special advocate.
There you go, court-appointed, I never get it right, court-appointed special advocate if children have been taken from a family and they need somebody to
That's right, that's right. Yeah. Yeah. Gotcha. Alright, so it says, good morning, could you tell me who is the appropriate person to send funding request to for the town of Canterbury?
To wait?
Do you require a warrant article? Is there a form for us to fill out? Any information you provide would be helpful, thank you. Regards from Melissa, the Executive Assistant, Casa of New Hampshire.
So in our budget, in our budget, we have uh in the welfare section, we support the Community Action Program of Merrimack County.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this organization is another charitable organization similar that is asking for uh support. It do not specify how much money, but uh, you know, I mean, we put a thousand dollars in the budget next year for Casa and if that's what you guys want to do, it passes through the budget process and so be it.
Okay.
If we have the ability to do it, it's an excellent organization that does really important work.
So why don't we table this until we
I would say meet with the budget committee in September hopefully and then talk to talk about that.
Start through the budget process? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, to
I can contact them and let them know that that uh that we'll be discussing with our budget committee and
Yup.
We'll keep them updated.
Yeah, great, yeah, it's a great organization.
Correct. Yeah. And then for all three of us, uh the, just a reminder on the elections coming up, September tenth and November fifteenth.
Some, what does some wiggle and absolutely mean?
And so
Oh, so that was a note, when Sam was telling me that he wanted this on the agenda, um
Okay.
The September tenth, oh, for technically all three, we need to be there for the entire thing.
Yup. Yup.
Cannot leave, and you
Yup, yeah, forget it, yeah.
Uh-huh, and so September tenth, he said like if there's an emergency or something, you can have someone around. But on November fifth, we need to follow everything as strictly as humanly possible.
Okay.
So you really, really, you have to be there.
Don't use
You really, really, really have to be there.
September tenth, November fifteenth.
Don't go in the hospital, like, okay, can we can we zoom in from the hospital?
Yeah, nothing gonna happen.
I don't think so.
But um
We have to shut other people in.
I was just gonna say, there is a provision to appoint if God forbid something does happen, which I hope it doesn't, Danny, we're here.
Take one. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, but there is a provision to handle it, Jim Miller and I had a discussion at one of the elections about that possibility, so.
I have two additions to the new business.
Okay.
One is uh, and I mentioned it before, um September um selectmen's meetings are the ninth and the twenty-third.
Yup.
Uh, I would like to have the budget committee in on the ninth.
Okay, yup.
Ninth and twenty?
Ninth and twenty-third.
Why not the second and the
Because the second is Labor Day.
Oh. Of course, okay, so ninth and twenty-third.
Do you want a red pen?
No, what I really need is an eraser, but I'll figure it out, twenty-third.
You need an eraser? Oh, okay.
I I thought I thought I thought I'd have an eraser here somewhere, I don't think.
Yup, it's in there.
It's in there somewhere.
And then the next item on new business is uh one twenty-five West Road, which is the old gas station at age of eighteen. Um, I got several phone calls today, I got a visit from a past selectman, past planning board member. Um, they're digging up and replacing the tanks down there. I spoke with the engineer, um the civil engineer that's in charge of the operation. They are replacing the tanks in kind. They, um, the tanks that were there were not leaking, they did not pass the DES test, but they weren't leaking. However, that is a water protection area in the town. Um, and our zoning does not allow underground tanks there. Um, they were there when that zoning went in, so they were allowed to stay. Um, I had that conversation with the engineer. We kind of went back and forth, uh I put a phone call in to Jim Weak, who's the Chair of the ZBA. Uh, I'm hoping to hear from him in the next couple of days. They were scheduled to start putting in the um sheeting underneath the tank on Wednesday or Thursday. So I told him we probably should hold off on that.
Yeah.
Um, I did tell him that the town was did was highly in favor of the the business going back in. Uh, everybody I've spoken to and everybody I've heard from would like to see it there, but there are certain rules and zoning ordinances that we have to follow, so um, I'll wait to hear from Jim Weak and talk to him and and then I guess we'll go from there.
So when I drove down there this afternoon to look, um it looks like they're also digging up the, if you're looking at building the right-hand side, is that where the septic was?
No, the septic is on the left-hand side.
The tanks are over there, what are they digging on the right?
The tanks are on the right-hand side, septic is on the left-hand side.
Oh, so even though the pumps are out front, the tanks are all the way around the side?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yup.
They're not digging the tanks up yet. The tanks are just standing there, they dug a hole for the new ones, I'm guessing.
I, yeah, they haven't pulled the old tanks out, they're just putting
Only has there's a huge excavation down on the right.
That's where they I think wanna put these tanks.
Oh, alright.
I think the challenge with town is that if if we wanna use our rules, and we should, I think, it it has to be an above-grade storage container that holds those tanks, so there's no leakage out of that area.
And I I told him that and he said there's absolutely no room for that on that property.
Well, that's
Well, I I don't know what to tell you on that, I said I'm gonna talk to the zoning board uh Chair and see how he feels it, because it would require variance if they wanted to put them underground.
And if that's the case, how did they get in there in the first place?
It's become a watershed protection area.
Because
Since they the tanks were in there, oh.
They were in there when the zoning board was
Okay. So does grandfathering have, is that what they're claiming?
He didn't say, he said they're replacing it in kind and he didn't feel that that it was necessary for variance. I said, well, we'll talk to the zoning board Chair and see what he feels.
Alright, so that was the engineer, what about the owner?
I haven't spoken with the owner.
Okay.
If you wanna see what the rules are, they're at the end of the zoning regulations under the watershed protection area.
Okay. Okay. That's good to know.
So those are the two new items, and then we got the the old whole business, yup. So on the whole business, I have a capillary uh solid waste committee that I went to the meeting, um went fairly quickly, there was some discussion on the uh, the big discussion point was the property uh that the that the co-op owns, um and uh I think I filled you guys in on on what the new uh proposal was.
You did.
The, they did, they did, uh at the meeting, it was decided to go ahead with that new proposal.
Hmm.
So the principal payment will be eight thousand dollars and the interest payment will be four thousand dollars, which is an increase of two thousand dollars a month uh from the current allocation. Um, just a couple of things, that the property that is for sale is valued, was valued at one point five million. Um, the principal so far paid uh as of May two thousand twenty-four was two hundred and five, four eighty-two thousand. Um, they are going to get it revalued, so reappraised.
Hmm.
Co-op is gonna get reappraised to see if that one point five is still in the in the ballpark of what what it's valued at.
Interesting.
But is for those houses that they wanna put in, or they further
No, well, it's part of, it's a portion of that property. That that development is looking at um housing and some specialty shops.
Hmm.
Not just housing, but uh some shops.
Come on, you
Well, you'll be coming through from Sewell Falls, right?
No.
No?
No, nope, nope, there's
But is that with either?
No, there would, there's potentially going to be a gate at Sewell Falls uh for emergency access only. Um, but the main main entrance would be from uh the the round development, age of seventeen. The the city does not want any traffic, any additional traffic on Sewell Falls.
No, I can imagine it would.
Um, can you forward those minutes along when they come from that last meeting, please?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
Yup.
Since one of us who said that they would be at the meeting neglected to show up by due notice.
And then the last And then the last uh item was um on the tuition reimbursement for the former employee.
Yup. Yup.
I I s- our attorney sent the letter, they got a response, uh the employee would agree to a hundred dollars per uh month of reimbursement. Uh, they owe thirty-seven hundred and some change, so it'll be thirty-seven months, so
Three years.
The interest?
Well, that was the offer.
Oh, that was their offer, Tom?
That was their offer
Oh.
to the attorney.
Got it.
Um, it's up to you to determine, um my email back to the attorney was seems like an awful long time to collect money on something that someone's actually making money off of today.
Yeah.
Since we provided them with that education.
Yup.
Um, small claims court is a option that we can choose, uh we can file ourselves, it's electronic filing. Um, unless unless the uh in this case, the former employee, um would like to sit in front of a judge, then both parties make an electronic filing. It goes in front of the the judge, Superior Court, and the court decides, unless you wanna appear in person, unless either party wants to appear in person. Um.
Not that it costs, oh, sorry.
Yeah, the 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 court could look at um this and say, well, the person can only afford a hundred dollars a month and so that's what we're gonna award. Um, there's a there's a fee for applying for small claims court, I think it's three hundred and fifty dollars or something like that, um if we
It's a year's worth of payments.
If we then do we get, you do get court costs, yes.
I think we should reject that offer.
I discovered it's hard to claim money in small claims courts from my experience.
Uh, do we know, not that it necessarily matters, but is um the person
You can you can make an outer offer?
Back then Well, yeah, do 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 we know if this person has already gotten a job in using these skills, that would make a difference?
Yes, this person is now employed from town to local.
Okay, then, um that makes a big difference because as you say, they are using the skills that we pay for
No, why?
Uh, to not, so uh I'm not sure what a reasonable counter offer would be, but a hu- you know, maybe to take the the three thousand seven hundred and divvy it up and have it be paid over the course of one year as opposed to three years. Um.
What, that's correct.
Which is, you know?
Thirty-seven fifty, can
Thirty-seven thirty-three. Thirty-seven thirty?
How about twelve?
Three hundred eleven dollars and a little over eight cents a month.
You could four hundred bucks and call that interest. I don't know, I mean, it it seems small claims court, as you say, Ken, it's hard to shake money out of it. Um, if he's employed, uh making money on our ticket, then I'd say he can pay. Um, maybe we'll give him a little bit anyway, but seems an interest-free loan is also a little
Yeah.
rankles. So what's current interest rate on loan, do I want to do credit card for goodness sake, that's seventeen percent, that's crazy.
Yeah. Do we have the ability to garnish his wages if we wing it in small claims court?
Oh.
I I don't know, I I'm not sure how it works.
I can't imagine it would be a speedy process anyway.
And if you go onto the website for small claims court, it says the courts are backed up and you're gonna expect
Yeah.
months of uh of waiting time, gotcha.
So what's a reasonable, what's a reasonable interest rate on a on a loan? Not seventeen percent, like what's current mortgage rates going?
I don't know, couldn't even tell you, I'm I'm trying to say.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to ask um somebody who might know those things.
I really don't know, um
I would say I could very least take that amount, divide it by twelve and and you know, whatever that is, and you know, four hundred bucks a month still for twelve months. I don't know what that means for interest, but it's a little bit more than
So it looks like uh thirty-year fix, seven and a half percent. Fifteen-year, six points, six point eight percent. And a ten-year, seven point six five percent.
Seven percent seems reasonable.
Yeah, so what's uh, what's seven percent on top of three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three divided by twelve?
He said seven percent.
Well, if you try to do twelve, you're gonna maybe squeeze the guy so he's not gonna pay.
It's three thirty-two eighty-six cents.
A month?
Yeah.
If he's working? Three hundred and thirty bucks a month versus a hundred? I don't know. If he wasn't working, I would feel differently, I think, but if he's using our
Mm-hmm, yeah.
the skills we paid for, then it, alright, so. What, who else has another amount?
I like that amount, I I think that's a, yeah, that's a reasonable
Alright.
That works, yeah.
That's our counter offer anyway, he's gonna say no.
Thirty, thirty-two?
Three thirty-two, what was the
Eighty-six.
Eighty-three-two?
For twelve months.
And that will get to three, a total of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four and thirty-one cents. Which is the original amount
Yup.
with seven percent added.
Yup.
That seems, I mean, again, that's our kind, you could say no, and then, you know, we'd
Yeah, that is, exactly.
Yup.
But, um
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. These two are very key, aren't they?
Yes, please.
Alright.
So one last thing for me actually is from either Kent or Ken. Have we made any progress with our dirt roads?
Ah, that was on my list too.
So Art talked to me two weeks ago. He called me up, he said, look, he says, I I don't know if you guys are gonna be able to make any decisions, he said, I this guy wants to get going on the rest of his work and he, he says if you if you don't wanna do it, let's make a decision and not do it. We gotta come up with something for that money, and if we And if we don't, we're gonna, what are we gonna do? Shuffle it out to various projects, or give it back?
We're not gonna give it back.
So, so my suggestion is, as it's been all along, is to consider Art some sort of a czar or a road superintendent, or something, a non-paying position. And this other guy is a contractor. We're gonna hire him, we're gonna agree on a price, and then we're also gonna pay for whatever materials John seems to think needs to go in there. And I think we'll come out to roughly the fifty thousand that we had talked with John about on the amount of materials that we're gonna go into that road. I don't know how else to, to sugarcoat this.
Well, the problem with, we still don't have any further communication from Art with any other prices on any of the other areas.
We'll, you'll ask John to go out and do all the asphalt roads in town.
But we had seven roads that we talked to him about, and he only ever answered us about one.
I only asked him for one, because I want this to be a demonstration project, and I want us to see if we can't train somebody to do this work, or go with this guy. I, I don't know.
Okay, that's, that's your opinion on how this should be approached, but we asked for information that he never, that he didn't give us, and he still hasn't given us.
So i- if you'd like to ask that question to him, call him up and ask him. He's gonna say, that's not what I talked to Kent about, and that's not what I want to do.
Okay, but am I the only one who thinks that we should get the bigger scope of all seven roads that we started out talking about before we say yes, no, or appoint a mazhar, or?
So, so first of all, not appointing a mazhar.
Or whatever one monster called him.
But we can't. We have a road agent.
And.
The road agent is in charge of the roads.
And this guy's just gonna be in charge of this one project for us.
So here's the issues. It's already, we're, we're into August. We haven't even started yet. We have to, we have to have a plan in place to spend this money by the end of this year.
And one road doesn't give us a plan. And he just didn't seem, I, I don't know. I was, I was quite frankly, not impressed by the fact that he came twenty-five minutes late to his appointment. The bid that we got was for half the amount that it was really going to cost, twenty-four instead of, oh no, it's really gonna cost forty-eight. Already, that didn't necessarily impress me, and I don't think, I don't know how we determine with doing one road, if it's a demonstration project, okay, what if we don't like the way it goes, then we're really up against a deadline about spending the rest of the money. So what I had originally thought we were going to get from Art was, here's our seven roads that we have on our list, talk to your guy, and give us an estimate and a bid on doing these seven roads, and we'll see how that fits in with the money we have to spend. And we didn't get any of that. So to me, that, I don't, I don't know, one road doesn't take care of our problem, or spend our money.
So I, I, I'm just gonna back off on this one, and I don't know how else to suggest we go forward with it, other than trying it out and seeing if it works for us. If it doesn't, then it doesn't, and we, we, we've learned that, but I, I don't want to ask him to try and figure out all the roads in town and all the materials when we're not paying him for anything.
Not all the roads in town, it's just the seven roads that we designated.
Got seven dirt roads, then. Let me be more plain.
Yeah, but all the roads in town is not the seven roads that we're talking about, that we started out as the scope of this project. He's yet to weigh in on the, what we've asked him to. And, and am I the only one who's, am I missing a big point here?
Can I, I sent the email out on the seventeenth of July, outlining my concerns. I don't know if you guys already know what we saw in it. I think my, my one biggest concern right now is that Art is supposed to connect John and the contractor, so they could do a site visit together and determine the scope of the project. And that has never happened. I don't know how you have a contractor, hire a contractor without some kind of scope of work that is agreed upon by, by the parties.
Does that seem unreasonable?
I mean, if, and I, I said this to Art. I said, Art, if you were hiring a subcontractor, would you not meet with them unless it's somebody you've done business with before, and go over the scope of the job? Of course you would. And, and that hasn't happened, and, and I don't, and I don't know why. That's my concern. As a, as a budget manager, I have a problem with hiring a contractor that hasn't agreed to come out and meet with the, with the vendor, or with the, with the people that are gonna be paying to go over the scope of work.
Well, I mean, I know I don't count too much, I'm just a selectman, but he and I did drive the roads around here, and we did go out and spend some time looking at that one in the borough.
You could do that with Art. Want John.
I know, I tried it with Art.
Want, want the contractor.
Let's just, I don't even.
Art's not gonna be the one in the machine doing the work.
And it, it doesn't mean that, I, I wish you wouldn't say, you don't count for much, it's a selector member, because that's not true.
I, I don't want to be in the middle of this anymore. I tried, it didn't work. That's that.
Okay, so then, do you not want to ever talk with Art anymore? I mean, he might be a reasonable contractor, if he would answer our questions, but he doesn't seem to. So where do we go from here if, if Art doesn't, or do we contact Art directly and say, come meet with John and fulfill the, answer the questions that we want you to as best you can, or say you can't answer them and we'll move on? How do, how do we go from here?
Time is getting short, first of all. I mean, we're, we're over eight months into the year.
And is this, that's also in our packet here from, oh, this is just Live Rate, make sense, right?
That's, that's the company that, that had requested information. Tell us the letter that we got from the guy in Boston.
Right, who was, who was.
That has a grader, that would agree to come out and work on the roads.
Right.
On hourly basis.
But I think if we can't quickly get back on course, then we're going for nobody to spend this money.
Yeah.
But the needs of those, however many roads, I keep saying seven, I'm, I'm not exactly sure now that that's the number. The needs of that, those roads were the top of our list and are still, correct, if we could find somebody to do them?
Correct.
So if.
Well, we've been at this since May, it's August.
Correct, but if we make a call to, if, if you don't want to make the call, whoever wants to make the call to Art to say, can you do this? Yes or no? And if he says no, then we look elsewhere, and we give ourselves, what, a month to see if we can find somebody else to contract, and if not, spend the money somewhere else, which, of which there are other places, but the roads are where we started.
The money, the money has to be dedicated by the end of this year.
Yeah.
It can be spent up until next year.
Right, right.
So if we found another contractor that was interested, and gave us a contract this year, they could do the work next year.
How about this guy that, that sent us this proposal? Is he somebody that we could contact and get a number?
Could. Sounds like he's a great worker here.
It does, yep. Can we still send our grader back, or do we need to buy this?
Don't know. We have a contract that, that should be here in the next two weeks.
It just seems that if the roads that we started out as the top priority in the town are still a priority, they're not, they haven't gotten any better since we started this discussion. Either Art is in or out. Apparently, the, the discussion since our, the last time we came in here, hasn't happened. Are you, can, can you give us a scope of work on these seven roads or not? He should be able to say yes or no fairly quickly, one would think, either yes or no. And if he says no, okay, fine. We'll go look elsewhere to get those seven roads taken care of. And if we can't find that in a, quickly, we're going to have to figure out what's next on the list. If it's not roads, we're gonna spend the money.
Yep.
Is that, is that an unreasonable way to, to go? I mean, I, I think it's, I almost feel like it's giving Art an extra chance that I'm, I'm not confident that he'll want to pick up on from the interactions we've had so far, but so far, he's the person we've been dealing with. So ask him first, and he can either say yes or no. But if it's yes, he's gonna have to jump on it and, and be a little bit more forthcoming with a good scope and good numbers than he has been, is my opinion.
So is that something, you want me to make a phone call to her?
Yep.
I, I do not have the technical expertise to have that conversation, so yes, please. And you've still got the, I'm assuming, the list from John that we started with? Which, which he also should already have. He may not remember that he does, but if you don't, they remind him, he should have that list. And then, so here we are in August. September's budgeting. We've got to do that by the end. So if we knew yay or nay from Art, he should be able to tell us by the twenty-third of, oh, we're in August. No, yes. I mean, if you call him tomorrow, or whenever.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes. He should be able to get back to us by the nineteenth, right, by our next meeting? Why wouldn't he? All he has to do is say yes or no, I want to do this, or I don't. It's not a small amount of work. Is that reasonable?
Alls I could do is reach out.
Right.
By the nineteenth, and if not by the nineteenth, by the ninth, because if we don't have it by the ninth, then we've only got September, October, well, say September and October to find someone else, and if we don't, then we've only got November, December to figure out what else to do with the money.
Correct.
So.
But as we enter the budgeting process, I think that's, that's the time to make a decision.
Okay. Well, budget committee, you want budget to come in the first meeting in September, right?
Correct.
So that's when it starts.
So on the budget side of things, it looks to me like that tree out in front of the old Alton's building is very dead.
Yes.
Should we contact Magoon and get a price on it, so we've got one for the Budget Committee when we're ready?
I can do that.
Does that seem prudent to people? I, I think it's very dead.
Sounds, yeah, certainly looks it.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not looking greasy.
Which tree?
One right in front of the library.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Big Christmas tree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's not looking good, unfortunately.
Do we have any updates on that Eagle Land offer, that the thirty acres off one oh six? Any updates on that?
We looked into that company and it was a lot of record there.
Okay, somehow I was, thought, thought that might be the answer to that.
Sorry, we looked into it, and we both came to the decision that, and we, then it just went off the, the.
Those are prob, those are probably like the, like the letters I get for the off, the land next to me all the time. And do we want to invite any school board reps to come to a select board meeting to talk about the upcoming tax bill and come up with a plan for a simple way we can give people a heads-up FYI, this is what's coming, and why? Even though we have already.
We have, yeah. And, and DRA sets the tax rate, right?
DRA sets the tax rate.
Would they have an idea?
I have, I talked, at our last meeting, I talked to the superintendent, and he said he didn't know, and then we got the estimated cost, and it's one point four million dollars more. I spoke to one of the school board members the other day and brought that up. They didn't really have a good answer. I, it, it certainly would not hurt to have the school, a couple of school board members come in and chat with you guys and say.
We're gonna have to find somebody, so.
Because I have had some inquiries, are we going to try and notify the general public or the taxpayers that there will be an increase, and if we have any idea of what it might be?
Well, even, even if we don't know the what of it, it seems like the school board should weigh in, since it's the school portion of the taxes going up so dramatically. And even if it's a joint statement from the school board and the select board just saying, hey, or not looks, but like, heads-up FYI, this is coming, and this is why we're, you know, if the BOS wants to say, this is why we're cutting taxes on other services, so your tax bill doesn't go up, or what, whatever the statement is, or the school board saying, this is the formula, this is what we have to do, this is who we had to hire, this is what we did, you know, whatever. It's all been said before, in several different ways, but people are, it's, it's getting down to tax bill time, and I think people are getting nervous.
Agreed.
It might just be helpful to say something.
I think certainly if, so when would you like to have a couple of school board members?
Maybe because of the budget commission, I think it was last year.
Yeah, that might be a great time.
Budget, okay. But I also think that if, if they're not going to alert our taxpayers, then we should, yeah.
Yeah, and that'd be, that'd be the conversation to have, I think.
Yep.
And when they're invited, say, that's why, that's a part of what we would like you to, if you want to prepare something beforehand.
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't even know what format would take, short and sweet, you know, nobody read through the whole big school board budgeting thing. And have it on a, small enough, it'll go on the town newsletter website, and in the newsletter, and on the town site, and.
Everywhere we can.
Just everywhere, so people won't be happy, but they should know for the fifth time that it's coming.
What else you have?
I think that was it.
Thanks. I'm ready to go.
For the committee, yeah, that's it.
Okay, looking for a motion.
So we'll.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?